It's a pleasure to be with each of you today. I'm glad, I appreciate y'all taking the time out of a Saturday morning. That shows your commitment to your board service and to your district. And so, I'm really glad to meet you. I've of course met some of you in my past life when I was on the School Board Association's Board. And I really miss that involvement. I retired from my Board in Lawrence when I took a job at PC. And at the time, I was Dean of Admissions. And time-wise, I just didn't have the time that you really needed to vote to School Board service. So, but it's a pleasure today. I've done this training for South Carolina School Boards Association for several years at their annual conference, at their new Board Member Training, Newly-Elected School Board Member Training. I've adjusted a little bit because I think it's much better situation when you have a small group to work with because there can be more discussion and questions and those kind of things instead of in a room of about 250 people. That's difficult to do. But I want to start, I might have turned this off. First of all, what I'd like to do is go around and have each of you tell me a little bit about yourself, who you are, what you do in your real life, and how long you've been on the Board, and why you chose to run for School Board and to serve on a School Board. So, Michael, would you like to go first?
Sure. Michael Cates, I'm a minister of music at Saluda River Baptist Church, and I'm also a real estate educator. Really, what I do in real life is follow my children as they've gotten older. I've been on the Board now for a little over two years. And I chose to serve, I've been active in SIC, PTO, and several district committees, several state-level committees. And I wanted to see all our children have the same great experience that mine did.
Very good.
What drove me to do that?
Cool. How about you, Ken?
I'm Ken Lovelace. I'm a general contractor, been contractor, opened my own business almost 33 years ago.
Wow, yeah.
You know, been relatively successful, I wouldn't say hugely, but anyway, new member on the Board.
Okay.
And I did this to give back to the community.
Right.
We don't have any grandchildren.
Yes.
My wife and I look at this as having 17,000 grandchildren.
There you go.
We wanted to, we wanted to, you know, leave something for the future, leave it better than we found it.
Sure. Perfect. Thank you. Dr. Melton, why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Absolutely. Christina Melton, I'm the grandmother of two, mother of two, wife of one. He actually is a teacher in the neighboring district. So, we have interesting public education conversations at any time.
I'm sure.
I began transition to the superintendent's role in January of 18.
Okay.
And then had the opportunity July 1st upon Dr. Hepburn's retirement that I started as superintendent. So, I moved elect into the superintendent's role. Always wanted to be in education since I was in third grade.
There you go. Very good.
That's great. And before I say, I failed to say that Lenny served as President of South Carolina School Board Association, one of the many things that she's done. So, apologize for not saying.
No worries, no worries.
But anyway, my name is Robert Gant. I think we, in real life, I'm retired. But in my real life before that, I was an appraiser. I worked with Department of Revenue, I traveled for the state, and appraised industrial and commercial and utility-type properties that we certified evaluations to the counties. And I enjoyed that very much, did that for about 27, 28 years. After I retired from the state, I worked for a bank for a year, got out of that, it was the most confining job of my life, and I couldn't handle that. But then I went back into the appraisal side of it for about five years. Anyway, still love that, but I pretty much retired. I've been on the Board 18 years, and I have enjoyed it from day one. Some days, I've enjoyed a lot more than other days because there are trying times as a Board Member.
Sure.
We're all seeing some of that right now. We're having groin pains and the issues you have to deal with, but I love it. I had a little interview with Barrett yesterday, which some of you have done, but I failed to mention one thing that I left out, and that is, my wife is probably my right arm, and she supports me when I am at meetings or go to meetings. And we've been married this summer, 50 years.
Wow.
Forty-nine and a half right now. We were planning, we're planning to celebrate that somehow. And, but anyway, it'll be a celebration.
Yeah, sure.
But we have three children, grown children, have three grandchildren. I'm in multiples of three.
Yes.
With that one wife.
Yes.
She had that one other. But it's been a great, I've enjoyed it all, every bit of it.
Good.
And I chose to serve because I saw the need to serve. And this community is very education-based. It always had, it was that way when I moved here, it's that way now.
Sure.
And I am, I want to leave it better than we found it, and I want to make sure it continues. One of my favorite terms is continue the excellence. It's an excellent school district in every facet of the way. We have those groin pains, but it's a wonderful, excellent school district, and I want to be a part of moving forward.
Great. Janne?
I'm Janne Hannan, and I think Lenny was President of School Board Association when I first got up. I've served 12 years. I had two times not own, I mean, I had a couple of years. But I, in real life, I teach.
Yes.
And I kind of did it backwards. I was a stay-home mom for 23 years, enjoyed every second of it, have no regrets. But I did, since I was in the third grade, wanted to be a teacher, played teacher all the time. And I absolutely loved it. So, loved her most, started my career there, I was cheerleader coach, and I felt like I was just, honestly, I look at Billy Williams, who's just, you know, loves her school at Jake. When you're young like that and no kids, I was married, but I have no kids, you just become entrenched in it, and I just loved it. And so, that's kind of why, when I ran for School Board, I had this feeling, I didn't really want to run until my kids were all in college, just so I wouldn't have a favorite school. Because, you know, you really, it's real easy to look after the school even though you know you're fair.
Yeah.
And, but I thought, where do you take you? I'd been SIC Chair, PTS President, and at every school, I had been that involved. And I thought, School Board was the place to put my voice for teachers. And I didn't work, so I had lots of time. And then a few years back, I told them, Oprah Winfrey said reinvent yourself when you're 50. And honest to goodness, I felt like I don't want to be the lunch bunch and do all those things. I've stayed home because of my children, and they were gone. So, the School Board was staring me in the face to do that, and I always wanted to. And Robert, I thought it was a, really would be the most fun thing in the world to do, and that everybody would love education. But, you know, I never realized all of the arguments and the difference of opinions
Sure.
in growth and dealing with problems. I just thought it would be the most fun job in the world. But I still do think it's the most rewarding job.
Yes.
No, no, I didn't mean it like that, but it was funny that I'd always wanted to be on School Board.
Yeah.
Is that crazy?
No.
I mean, I'm talking before I knew any of y'all or knew anybody, I just thought that'd be where I would put my hat and serve. But, so now, it's really unique being a teacher, because Lenny and I talked about this. If you guys don't know that even from the time your last child finished school, the schools are changing every day. And unless you are a teacher in there today, you are not, you don't really realize what has changed. And we as a School Board, that's my mantra, is to be the voice for teachers that we keep and recruit and retain them. And I'm excited to be on the School Board.
Great. Nikki?
Hi. My name is Nikki, I'm trying to answer the questions.
We're good, we're all good.
What do I do in real life?
We're all good.
I am, my real life, I'm a stay-at-home mom. I've raised my kids. My oldest is 19, and my youngest is, she's 11. That's hard to say. I want to say she's eight or nine, but she's not, she's 11. And I, that's what I've done my whole life, and I've always been involved in all the schools. I'd like to echo every other reason, you know, that we're here, same.
Same.
Saying, I'm here because I care about education and I can see the difference. My own parents, you know, my dad didn't graduate from eighth grade. He dropped out before he even got through eighth grade. My mom grad, or didn't, she dropped out when she was in 10th grade. And not that, they were wonderful parents, and they actually stressed education to me because they realized that that's what they needed in their lives. And so, ever since then, I've had a passion for education because I can see what it makes a difference in people's lives.
Sure.
And so, that's, I'm, since I'm currently in, like, I didn't wait for my kids to leave to try this.
Sure.
I wanted to do it now because I wanted, because I know what's going on in the schools. And I do have a few favorite schools, but since I have so many kids and we've done so many things in the district, my favorite schools are still like seven schools.
Yes.
That's not such a small number, yeah. So, but I just, like I said, echo the same thing that everybody else said.
Sure.
Because I wanted to serve in the community, and it was, it looked like a lot of fun, and I felt like I would have a voice, and it is much harder than I thought it was going to be.
Yes.
And so, all those things, and I'm just glad to be here.
Good, great.
We're glad for you.
Yep. Leah?
And my name is Beth Hutchison, and I retired in June from, after 36 years in education, higher education. So, I got to work with the older students. It was the last 18 years at USC, and that's where I really had my most involvement with students and working one-on-one, helping them with career goals and internships and getting real-life experiences and taking them from, you know, where they left in K through 12 and really helping them think about, okay, how do I get to the next step?
Sure.
And so, that was perhaps, through advising and through internship programs. And so, I really feel like I was a teacher, you know?
Of course.
I really was a teacher, and had to give a few bad grades, but it was, it really was, it was a wonderful experience. And so, but I'm enjoying retirement and able to give more time to the School Board now. Been on the Board 16 years total this past time for 10 years. I took a six-year break for various reasons, mainly my mom was ill, so. And then I went back and got my masters. And then I chose to serve on the School Board back in 86 because, well, I just assumed everybody, kind of like Janne, I assumed everybody liked public education. And then when the bond referendum in 95 did not pass, I was shocked. And so, I went to a Board meeting and I saw that, I said, well, this is not what I really expected. So, anyway, I was motivated and started learning more, and it's just been a real, I love it. I absolutely love it because I feel like I can make a difference.
Sure.
In the lives of these students, and for everybody involved with the school district.
Good.
And for our community.
Good.
It's a real passion.
Good, yeah. Thank you. I'm not surprised at what I've heard, and so, all of you have approached your Board service from a sense of wanting to give back, wanting to serve your communities, wanting to make your schools better. And that's obviously what you all have in common, and that is great because I will tell you, there are some School Board members, that's not why they run. So, y'all are on the right track. So, that's a good thing. I'm going to share just a little bit because when I ran for my local Board for the first time in, I think, 1995, I had one child in the second grade and two behind, well, actually one, I actually had my third one after I was on the School Board. And at the time, we had a very, what I would say, dysfunctional Board. We had a lot of rogue Board Members in the schools doing things they shouldn't have been doing. And I just thought that, first of all, I had been engaged in lots of different community organizations, the United Way, the Literacy Council, Chamber of Commerce, all those things. And I came to realize in my mind, those are Band-Aid programs. If we're going to change things, we have to educate our children, and we have to educate all of our children very effectively. Then we won't need the United Way or the Literacy Council or those types of things. So, I just threw all my time into School Board service, got off of all those other things, and really enjoyed it. I was, initially went on because I, I too, in third grade, wanted to be a teacher. When I was at PC, I was like, I'm not smart enough to be a teacher. And so, I majored in psychology. So, but anyway, but I have always had utmost respect for teachers and educators, and I wanted to be an advocate for them. Soon after my, I started working on the Board, I realized that's all great, but our service is really to the children and not adults. And so, what I'm going to go through today, and we'll go, let me talk about what we're going to do today a little bit. We're going to talk about roles and responsibilities of the Board Members, and how that fits with superintendent's role. We're going to then talk about some of the pitfalls that sometimes School Boards and Board Members fall into, that sometimes can hinder a Board from being effective and being high-performing. And I want to say that all of these things that I'm going to present today are not things that I've come up with or South Carolina School Boards has come up with. This is based on research through number of years where people have studied high-performing school districts that, where students excel in every facet, and how the leadership of their Board helps make that happen. Some of the things I'm going to say today, you may not agree with, and that's okay. Again, this is like the most effective way and the way Boards should do and operate. After we do all that, I'm just going to do a really quick overview of Robert's rules. We are not getting into the down and dirty with that. I just want to talk about that in relation to how Board Meetings should run and perhaps give you some tips on how that can be done very smoothly and so everybody understands why sometimes Robert might call somebody down or not do this or not do that or whatever in the, in kind of the way, the role of the Chair. Throughout this, I've put questions, discussions, next steps at the bottom, but if y'all have questions as we go, and you want to make comments, just let me know, we'll do that. But I do want to keep it moving. Feel free, if you need to get up, get more to drink, if you need a restroom break or whatever, we will break for that later because that will be my call. But feel free, in the meantime, if you need to do that. So, because I want it to be somewhat informal. I want you to feel like a part of this conversation. Again, I used to do this in front of about 250 people, and I much would prefer interaction. So, as we go through this, we can, we can hopefully do some of that. Good Board Members, effective Boards do not micromanage, they are trustees for the public. Let's just start out with this because a lot of times, and I will say, as a new Board Member, I thought it was my responsibility to do a lot of things that wasn't my responsibility. And we'll talk about that a little bit more. The other thing that I want to mention kind of upfront is the, your Board Meetings are Meetings of the Board held in public. They're not public meetings because the public, you can have a public participation, public comment time, and that's great. Some Boards do that, I'm not, I don't know if you do or not, but some Boards do. But it's your Board Meeting. You interact with each other, and we'll talk about that a little bit later as well. But it's a meeting in public because that's whom you represent and your governing body. You need to set the standard for your district with high ethical standards and accepting responsibility for the operation of how this, how this district operates and its successes and its failures because ultimately, you are the, you're the governing body that makes all this work. But you want to set high ethical standards for yourselves and for the Board as a whole because you want to model that type of behavior of what you expect your district staff to do and your leadership within your schools. You also want to be sure that everybody is following the law, both in letter and spirit. That gets, and we'll talk a little bit later about Board Policies and how that, all that works. But you want to be sure that you're doing the right things and under the laws that govern you and the district itself. These are just some things that you need to think about. I know that South Carolina School Boards has an ethics code, a code of ethics that they share with School Boards. I don't know if y'all have seen that or done that, but you may want to, it's up here.
Right.
Our Board, when they came out with this, we actually adopted that as a Board and everybody signed it. And I will say that it's just a good guide, and Robert, I guess you can get everybody copies if you don't already have a copy. Your Board Policies should also have conflict of interest policies. Every once in a while, there'd be an issue that comes up or a Board Vote that might involve something that you may have an interest in financially. You need to reveal that and recuse yourself from voting that. But you should have Board Policies that deal with conflict of interest. The other thing would be, and sometimes this comes up, we had a Member on our Board whose wife was an Assistant Superintendent. So, when it came time for renewal of approving those recommendations from the Superintendent for renewal of that contract, he would recuse himself from that particular vote. Lexington is a little bit larger district than ours, but we would run into family Members in various positions with our Board Members. So, those kind of things you need to think about. You want to make sure that you have equal opportunity for folks that work here and for what your academic performance indicators are. Periodic reviews of major management systems, and that typically would come from your Superintendent overseeing how the management system within your district operates and is, and if there's any changes and shifts, sometimes there's a new need for a different area or a different Assistant Superintendent in another area rather than this. So, those kind of things, always reviewing that to be sure that you're on the best track. Review of internal audit procedures, and always have external financials. All districts do that, but that's, those are just things you need to do. That's for your accountability to the public.
Lenny, could we?
Yes.
Could I ask you, just a clarification, several of us have family Members who teach in the district.
Yes.
And it's always, my understanding, that is, if we're approving contracts, we do that en masse once a year.
That's right.
And if there's a, if there's a situation that affects everybody the same way and no special treatment for one person, then it's not a problem to vote on that.
Right.
So, or not have to recuse yourself.
I would, I would ask your attorney about that, but if it is the teacher contracts, typically that wasn't issue. It was when it was a higher level, principalship or an Assistant Superintendent, that kind of thing, that's when. But, but that's an attorney question.
Right. Well, I think what you just said is kind of the guidance we've had before.
Yeah, sure.
Lenny, do many districts across the state have nepotism policies?
Most do, yes.
You know, just in their policy.
Again, I think, back in the day when I was on the Board.
Yeah, and I know it's changing.
It wasn't as, I mean, like, that was different. And in small districts, sometimes it's difficult. For example, in our district, when our Superintendent, back in the day, not now, when our Superintendent was hired, his wife was a literacy coach in another district, and we were beginning that program. And she brought things to the table that we needed. And so, the Board chose to employ her as well in that position. We got a lot of kickback from our community on that, but he did not specifically oversee her. I mean, this guy was, had such character, you would not question that he was doing that right. But of course, the public did. So, but yes, most districts have a nepotism policy. And then these days and times, I imagine it's more, need that more than we used to.
Do we have one not now?
Yes.
I believe the Hatch Act, isn't it, and that's what, what the Act is, that federal, that, you know, describes that if you directly supervise somebody, then that is nepotism if you do not directly supervise?
Right. Well, and whatever your Board Policy, it would potentially refer to that, so when you have a policy at the bottom, it's going to reflect.
Is there a state law that refers to the?
I do not know specifically, but if there is and it's in your policy, it'll be referenced at the bottom of that policy, yes. And that's just a matter of just, not that anybody would.
Kind of a comp.
Play favorites or do anything, it's just a appearance of that potential thing. And there's zeal to oversee management, Board Members must and not. And this, we'll get into a lot of this going down, but you don't want to slow down decision-making. And I think Janne talked about, things change so quickly within our school systems, and the schools today are not like they, what they were three years ago or last year. You don't want to disempower your Superintendent, and you don't want to undermine your overall management effectiveness. We're going to talk a lot today about governance versus management. And the Board's role is overall governance. Your Superintendent is responsible for the day-to-day operations of your schools. That's what we talk about. This, this is the place where Boards, particularly when your new Board Members can get in trouble. Because when I got on the Board, buddy, I was like, all right, I'm going over to Lawrence Primary, and I'm going to find out what's happening over there because they got a problem. That is not my job. That is not my job. If I've got issues, I'm going to call Superintendent, I'm going to explain. Joe Blow called me, they have an issue, potential issue, I just wanted you to know about it. It's up to her whether or not she's going to go check that out, not an individual Board Member. We're going to also talk about how to visit schools in a little bit, too. What Boards should be focused on are the ends. What are you trying to accomplish? What are your Board Goals? What is, what are the district goals? So, the example given there is to increase graduation rate. That's, that's what you say. We want to increase the graduation rate, and hopefully, there'll be a figure attached to that, by how much. But the way to get there is up to your Superintendent and her staff to figure that out. It's not necessarily for you to figure that out. So, you want to focus on the ends, the goals, the overall objectives, and then your school staff figures out how to get there, and it's their responsibility to do that. If they don't do that, you know, she's the one you look at. It's not, well, Bill over here at so-and-so school, doing his job, that's not for you to say, that's for you, for her to deal with. Now, she's going to come to you with suggestions for how to meet that goal, and some of that you'll approve, but it's under her recommendation of how to get there. You set a district vision, and we're going to talk about that again a little bit, too. There should be a mission statement for your district, performance goals that you're going to track, both on student achievement, performance goals. Your policy should support whatever you're trying to accomplish. And then, the end results is the big picture and where you want to go. The Superintendent is the one that puts all that into place. She's the one that makes it happen through working with her staff and principals and teachers, et cetera. So, the operational side is what the Superintendent is responsible for. The Board decides what? Superintendent decides who? I'll give you an example of something in there in a minute. You can request information, and when I say that, and we're going to talk about that a little bit, too. That is not, that doesn't mean that you can request every little bitty thing, info. Because again, we're going to go back to, don't slow progress and don't hinder your, don't disempower your Superintendent. One of the things that we did in our district, we had, when I first got on the Board, we had a Board Member who was just asking for all kinds of data, really for no reason except just to make the school district office work and get him information. We also had Board Members who were going individually to Superintendent and asking all these questions and wanting all this information. So, what we did, and what it was causing was, it was causing the district staff to have to use all their time to get all this information for a while, for what. So, our Board decided if a Board Member wanted specific information, they would, we would say that at our Board Meetings, and they would request that. The Board would decide whether or not they wanted that information. So, if it's a good reason. So, you know, if you're trying to increase graduation rates and you asked for the past five years' history of graduation rates, that's legitimate. So, part of that is to get on the same page so that if one Board Member gets something, everybody gets it. And that, that's how we, and I'm telling you, that made such a difference for us and made a, made a big difference. And it also slowed down requests for information that really weren't valid. It really had nothing to do with what the Board was working on or towards the Board Goals, or district goals. Consider issues and adopt policy. I want to, I wanted to talk about, when I forgot, first got on the Board, I knew that the Board's role was to approve and adopt policies under which the district would operate. And I'm like, how in the world are we going to know what policies to write? I mean, I thought we had to sit down and write all these policies. Well.
We don't. We don't.
No. So, I was much relieved to know that there were resources that actually helped write those policies, School Board Association being one of those. And districts already had some policies in place. So, our role really was to review changes to policy, the needs for new policies, but they were given to us as a recommendation. So, if you, that was a concept, I had a little bit of trouble at the beginning understanding. I was, like I said, I was much relieved. So, School Board Association is one of the resources when laws change, both at the national level or state level, they're going, they're going to send that information out to all the districts so that policies can be updated. And so, at your Board Meetings, when you get a policy update, you're typically approving that. You're not having to sit there and write it, which, you know, again, thank goodness, we didn't have to do that.
Lenny, that, I'm glad you hit those points. We, a few years ago, we realized, and so much has evolved with technology and so forth, but we realized that we were woefully behind with policies. So, we went through a several-year process.
Yes.
When it, when it would work out. Sometimes you just can't do it.
Right.
But we cleaned them up, updated. But Mr. Lovelace and I have had that conversation, really what drives us now, when laws change and conditions. I look at some of the tobacco policies, all that, that's, those were, all of that's just evolved.
It is, it is.
So, it, it's driven more by those things.
Exactly.
Electronically, we keep up. Thank goodness, School Board Association tracks all that, and they let us know.
That's right. Because districts don't have the personnel to keep up with all that. So it's good to have that, and, and State Department does the same thing. And so, you've got all of them trying to keep up with all the laws.
Right.
So you don't get in trouble.
And luckily, and I think it works pretty well here, as well as it can, but the departments that are directly affected by certain student-based policy, then they will keep up with that change and bring it.
That's right, yeah.
We get policies coming from different areas that.
Right.
We've got a lot of help with that, and we don't get them all, but it, we work at it.
Oh, sure, yeah. And it, that's a constant. I mean, almost every board meeting we had, we had new policies or changes, amendments to policies approved. One of the things, too, and I'm assuming, so the board is responsible for proven policy, but there's usually an administrative rule that goes with that. That's not for you to approve. That's the means. That's for, you're given that, and you're given that for information, but the policy is what the board approves. The administrative rule doesn't require your approval. It's information.
Lenny.
Yes?
Let me ask Robert, when we started that, about looking at the policies, and then even now, like the other night, we had several on there, and this may be more of a Dr. Melton question. Do you, as a staff, decide which ones to bring to us, Dr. Melton, to cut up? And, and are you going in an order, or are you looking like what we need to handle first?
It's, it's complicated, honestly. Back in July, when I started, we brought out policies because if you look back, we reached back three years ago to try to make sure we brought policies up to date that we needed. So I'll use Reed to Succeed as a recent example. That was one we needed to be urgent on, because it affected retention, it affected promotion. So we had to have a sense of urgency on that. But some other ones, such as the vaping and the smoke-free environment, we needed stakeholder involvement with that to make sure people had a chance to review it. So as an executive staff, we sit down to look, and we started trying to plot when we could put that on the horizon. So, Mr. Katz, I believe, has shared that document with the board, and things we've tried to project out of what can wait till closer to the end of the year to start a new academic year successfully versus what is needed right now to make sure that we're in compliance for the current academic year that we're in. So, it's hard to explain that, but a lot of moving.
But you are, that's what I mean, you're on top of it.
Yes, ma'am.
Saying what we ought to, you can cherry pick what you bring to us.
Yes, ma'am. There's a priority, and there's a sense of timeliness that we need to make sure that we're ready for, of what we need right now versus what could wait till later.
And that's why I sent that forecasting document.
Yeah, that's always.
I was a little bit confused about something, okay? We, we have spent several board meetings with first readings on policy, and then, you know, we'll, I guess, two, two readings.
Discussion and two readings.
Okay. But then, and I guess it's to do with the place it is on the agenda, but then, the other night, we had a discussion about another topic, and then we voted on it. Right there at that meeting, we didn't have two readings on it, okay? Is, why is that?
Well, it depends. So, a policy is different from some other type of action. So, your, your board policies would dictate how many readings you have to have before you vote on a policy.
Right.
Okay? Other actions are, can be, can happen right then.
So if it's, if it's listed as an action item on the agenda?
That's right.
Then, then you, then you don't have to have two readings?
That's correct, yes. Just policies or what. And, and again, you have to refer to your board policies as far as how, how many readings you have before you actually approve a policy, follow that. But if there's a recommendation from the superintendent, let's say that you want to implement a particular testing, something in elementary schools, she can provide the information, the verification of why you need it, and all that kind of stuff, and you can vote on it right then. But, and we're going to talk about this a little bit, you should have been given all the information you need in order to make that decision. And, and we're going to talk about that a little bit later, but yes. So policies are different from other actions. And, and again, your policy manual will tell you how many readings, and you just have to follow that.
Well, if the superintendent could make that move, why don't she just do it without the vote? I mean, if she can, if she can do that.
Well, there are some things that will need board approval, program changes, hiring of personnel, those kind of things. She's bringing that to you as a recommendation for the board to approve it. That's the direction the board wants to go, or you want to approve that program because it fits with what your goals and objectives are. Yeah. I mean, they're day-to-day decisions she makes. She does not have to run by you because she has policy to follow.
I agree. I understand that. But I mean, you know, that's clear as mud to me. I don't, I don't understand.
Well, and part of that, too, comes from being on the board for a while. And you, and you get, again, and, and I'll go back to my own personal experience, when I got on my board, I was ready to change the world. And I'm like, oh, yeah, we're going to do this, and this, and this. And I learned very quickly that number one, things don't move that quickly. Sometimes much to people's frustration, but it's nobody's particular fault, it's just how it works. And I was part of a board, and I was not just an individual who's out there trying to do something. So, but what you learn on board service is you come to understand some of those things because they're particular to how board, school boards, school districts work. And, and it's just things you just have to learn as, as you go. There's no way to learn it all on the first day. I mean, wait till we talk about school finance. You can serve on the board for 15 years, you still don't understand school finance, so, yes.
Lenny, policy, I was just going to say, too, the school board has the whole right to, even though we have this two readings, the number of years I've been on the board, and this was back when Cindy Swick was chair, I just remember this.
Yeah.
We changed the, we voted to change the policy in one night, to vote on the budget because of some, you know, some urgent reason.
Yes.
And there were board members that didn't support it that quick because of the public, you know, how you have public hearings for the budget. But we, but the board had the authority to do that.
You do, and you have a policy.
Right, so they changed.
That explains how you can set aside policy in order to act. We're talking about that a little bit. You do not want to do that very often.
No.
But there will be situations where you have to do that. In my 16 years of, of board service on my local board, we did that once. But it, it called for it, and we, I mean, it was on the agenda, and people knew it was coming. But you don't want to do that very often, but, but you can, you have authority to do that, yes.
Lenny, I have a question, actually, to, having to do with two readings. Is that required, that we have to have two readings? Because that really stretches out, and some things, it doesn't necessarily matter because it's just a.
Right.
Other policies, you know, it might be something that the administration is trying to get in place to implement for the following year. So are we required to have two readings for the policies? Do other boards just have one reading for policy? You have the discussion, and then you have the first and final reading?
Yes. Our, our board would have two readings. So we would receive the policy at a meeting, we'd have any discussion about it, questions, et cetera. Next meeting, we would approve.
Oh, that's what I was saying, so.
It's not a recommend, it's, it's your district's operation, so it's not required, I don't believe, you can correct me, it's not required that you have three readings.
It's just required by our policy.
By your policy.
No, there's no outside.
Right, but, but what I'm saying, what I'm getting, exactly. I know it's required by our policy, but what I'm getting at is that at some point, if we wanted to, to change, because there are some policies where it just don't even require it, or what you're saying.
Right, exactly, yeah.
You know, it's just, you know, it's like, okay, we know, a no-brainer. So, you know, state law, and we just have to do it.
That's right, you have to do it, yeah.
So, you know, that's something I'm putting down as we might want to look at. And then the other thing you mentioned is, we do approve the rule, if I'm not mistaken. When we do policies, we.
You do.
And, and we go into a lot of discussions. So what I'm hearing you say, I've never thought of this, is that the board is responsible for the policy.
That's right.
But then the rule is really.
The implementation of the policy.
The implementation, so that's where the superintendent interprets, and, oh, she's here, heard the discussion from the board members.
Yes.
But then she is responsible to meet the goals of what the board said.
About the policy.
So that's another.
That was something we changed within our board once we got going, is because we were getting the policy and administrative rule, and we were approving both, but.
Yeah.
We understood that the rule was actually how the policy was going to be implemented. That's not the board's role. How that's going to be implemented and met is not the board's responsibility, it's administration's responsibility. So that's another thing you could think about. Because when you start talking about how you're going to meet that goal, you're getting into management. And so, you want to, you know, you want to try to not get down in those weeds, because you're not, I don't mean, you're not the expert. They are. You were in, you were in education, you're a teacher, you know, that doesn't make you the expert in operation of your district, and that's why you're hiring the superintendent, to hire people who are experts to run your district. What I would suggest, and you can always, even if you have one reading for policy, it's okay, because you could always, as a board, delay the vote. You could always move to table this until the next meeting for more information and all that kind of stuff. So, you know, what I would suggest, and again, anything like that, you're going to want to get some probably legal advice to be sure you're doing it right, but you could change it to one reading. The board always has the authority to vote to table it till the next meeting, or to get more information, and withhold the vote until the next time. But there are so many policies that, it is a no-brainer. I mean, you really don't have a choice because it's state or federal law, and I, I know that the majority of policies that would come before us, it was all about that. It wasn't necessarily district operational stuff, it was stuff that was coming top-down that we had, had to have, so.
Lenny, just one quick comment, I think I had a couple, and Beth just hit on the self-imposed part of our policy, but everybody getting real excited, but there's a little stack of paper over there at the end of the day, that's part of your graduation certificate.
Reading for the night.
You're going to get a paper copy of every policy. Now, Michael, I am sorry.
Board policy.
Board policy.
Board policy, right. That pertains just to the board. But anyway, I think that's good. I've got, I got mine in a little notebook, it's got marks all over them, and it's helpful.
Don't you have, you have them electronically, I'm assuming, on your, on your thing?
Yeah.
Another, another thing, and I'm getting way off topic here, but you may want to explore going to Paperless, and there, I think School Boards now has a system or.
Well, I didn't hear you. Say that again.
No, Paperless.
Paperless?
He is.
Can you look right there and say, Paperless?
No, honestly, and I'm, I'll use an example, so, I know y'all meet quite often. That's, that's something else you may want to discuss at some point. Y'all meet a lot, and it may be necessary, I don't know. Most boards, most boards meet once a month.
Every month, every time.
And if there's a need for something to happen quickly, they'll call a special called meeting. Again, you don't want to do that very often, but sometimes you do. Point to that being is, you want to be sure that you're getting your board materials in enough time for you to read them, understand them, ask questions about them before the board meeting. And, and we're going to talk, you're going to hear me repeat myself as we go through the slide.
Well, that's good, we'll learn it better.
Well, yeah.
We hear it twice.
That's a teacher. Repeat it, yeah.
That's a teacher.
So, if, if you could move Paperless, where all of your board communications, even between, among you, between you, from superintendent to you, you to superintendent, whatever, there's a system where you can do that, and it's very efficient, it saves a lot of time on a lot of people's part, and it gets you the information a whole lot faster than you're getting it in paper form, whether it's mailed to you, or you pick it up, or whatever. It, it would just help you have the information you need in a much more timely manner. That's just something to think about, so y'all, y'all can explore.
Lenny, I hadn't quite finished my, my question, and I think, I know where Ken, he was mentioned the other night, an action we took, and you, you hit on this so well, that, that may have appeared to be sort of a new action, but actually, we've dealt with that for about 18 months or longer, knowing it was coming. So it was a continuation of an issue, and that's part of what you're talking about, just that experience of no one was driving the train a little bit.
Yeah.
And that's, you know, it wasn't a new issue, it was a continuing issue, but it was a, it was in the forefront, needed to happen.
I, I will say, there's, when you, when you come on to the board, you're coming on to a board that's moving. I mean, things are happening, and things are in progress, and all this type of stuff. But you may not be, I mean, a lot of people who run for board don't, haven't necessarily kept up with all that stuff. And so when you get on the board, you find yourself in the middle of something that you may not have all the information, but the board has already acted on something. I'm going to use Greenville School System as an example, and this has been back 20, 25 years ago, probably now. They were having issues with that. So they had district goals, the board had bought into them, they were all of it, and then they would have an election, and it was like starting all over again. So what they started, started doing on two fronts, candidates who put themselves up for, for school board election, they would meet with them and say, here's our, here are our district's goals, this is what we're working towards, we hope that you can support this, da-da-da. Once they were on board, they would have a workshop with the new board members, the chairman and the superintendent would meet with the new board members to kind of bring them up to speed about what, where we are, and what's going on, and what the goals are, and what is happening. They did, they've done that, and that has been one of the most highly performing, efficient, effective boards in the state of North Carolina. Because they do that.
Wait a minute, that's personal. You're hitting all of us right now.
Well, no, 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 no. I'm, I'm using them as an example.
That is big as they are. I mean, this is huge.
And they're huge, yes. And that's huge.
Quite, quite a statement for.
And because they, and again, it's kind of like when the governor changes. You know, you might be on this trajectory, and things are going well, you get a governor that has a different vision, and then you go over here. And so, North Carolina for years, you know, was on the same trajectory because the governor was there for so, I mean, they just kept, the one that came after them kept going on the same track. And then once, you know, so, same thing with school boards. You don't, you don't want to throw your, your system off track, you want to, and you, you should be up to speed, and, and the way you do that, and the mechanism for do that, you just have to figure out how that happens.
Staggered elections help an awful lot, too.
Sure.
Seventy board members coming on, and this season, board members.
So it's a constant thing, and, and, but I think maybe, maybe think about how, moving forward, the, the current board can bring new people on. Doesn't mean they have to agree with everything you're doing, but you're at least informing them of where you are, what's happened, what's in order, what's the next thing, biggest thing coming up, that kind of stuff, so.
Lenny, so we can move on, but just to.
Yes.
Clarify on the administrative rule. The only ones we approve are the ones the law requires us to approve. And then everything else is, is brought to the board as a courtesy, as information. So even though it comes to us, unless the administrative rule has some requirement of law that it's, that it's adopted by the board, Dr. Melton and previous superintendents have been courteous enough to bring those to the board as, as information. And we might want to be clear when those come, that this is coming for information so the board's aware of how we're implementing, implementing the goals and vision of the district. Lenny, I want to, excuse me.
Go ahead, Jane.
Well, I've been.
No, go ahead, Jane.
No, 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 you're good.
I figured you were finished, because you talked.
I figured you were finished, could see talk.
Come on, confess something.
Oh, okay. I wanted to go back to when you were talking about, you know, you can, we, we get our packet on, on a Thursday afternoon.
Yeah.
And then, you know, the next day's Friday. So, you could have something that night, and you've not had time to study it. And I, as a teacher, I study mine.
Sure.
And so, I don't get the opportunity to call anybody and have my questions on Friday. And then Saturday and Sunday, you don't bother anybody. And then Monday, you may not get the exact person you wanna talk to.
That's right.
So, I think whether it's, I agree with Beth about some of those policies, not naming it twice, but whether we vote on something like the other night, where you can, like, and you're right, you can vote on something brought up that's not policy.
Right. That's right.
I think, and I'm gonna say this to this, for us as a group, I think it's very important that we have plenty of time that we all feel that we got all the questions answered, and we were ready for that vote. And I think sometimes that would be a place that maybe we, as a board, could communicate, you know, how we could improve that. Because I, I trust my, you know, what Dr. Melton brings to me and her people. But then, if it's done very quickly, I may not have had time. And we are the eyes and ears of the community. We are voted in to represent the people.
That's right.
So, when you hear from them, at least waiting on something that may be controversial, you at least have time to hear it, get the answers for what you're, what people may be worried about, and then you could come back. So, I'd just like to say to the board, I think that's to Ken's question, there could be controversial things. We do need more time for us to, to ask questions of what they brought us.
Right. Well, and, and the thing is, is, I, I think y'all meet sometimes two, every two weeks, which is really, that's a lot. And so, it's hard to have a meeting here, absorb what all happened there, and then plan the next one. So, but that, that's up to y'all. Y'all gotta figure that out. But if, if you spread that out, it would give you the opportunity to have the materials sooner.
And that's a good point.
And, and to absorb. We would get our material, we were, our district was required to get us our board materials seven days in advance of the meeting. So, if we met on Monday night, we'd get them Monday before. Gives you plenty of time to look, ask questions, because part of, you know, there are a lot of, there's a lot of information that you get, you may have questions about, that's really not, I mean, not that you're trying to hide anything, but you need to understand it. And so, not to take up board meeting time, go ahead and call the superintendent or the board chair and say, "Can you just go through this with me and explain it to me?" Because one of the things that boards need to do is make data-driven decisions. You're gonna hear me say that several times a day. Your decisions are data-driven. They're not emotionally driven, they're not public opinion-driven, et cetera, because you've got information that the public doesn't have.
You talking about numbers?
Excuse me?
You talking about numbers?
What, what do you mean, numbers?
Data.
Data, any kind of data. Numbers, information, research. Except, like, for a program, it may not be about numbers. It may be about the research that supports this particular program being implemented. So, again, you've got information that, that the public might not have, the data. Now, it's public, and they can probably, they can get it, 'cause it's in the board, but, but that's what you base your decisions off of, is the information that you have. Every once in a while, and I had a board member on our, our board, you could put down all the facts in front of that person you wanted to, and it didn't matter. It was like, "Don't confuse me with the facts." Honestly, I mean, that was what it was. So, try to absorb that, and try to, to, to understand the data. And sometimes it's difficult, particularly when you're talking about educational programs or school finance. So complicated, and areas probably outside our expertise. And so, sometimes you need to ask those extra questions, just so you understand, so you can vote based on information and, and data.
Lenny, quick point on that. I wanted to say two things. This, and something she said a minute ago, we hadn't had a workshop like this in years. So, my, my thought, other thoughts, we need to do it more often. And the plan is, hopefully, this'll go well. Michael had suggested a long time ago that we have, part of this workshop have board goals and objectives that mirror what our, and we probably wanna do that after annual conference comes up, and we may call them again.
That's a whole nother day.
Oh, yeah. Well, we realize, but the second thing I wanna say, here's a great example of what we're talking about. We moved away from meeting twice a month. That's, that's rigorous, to be honest with you. We moved away from that for several reasons, and we just added back a couple of those meetings. And we, and during that time that we went away from it, we called a couple of special call meetings. We have one issue we need to deal with, and deal with it, and move on. So, that worked. But here's a prime example of what we're talking about. We just met last Monday. We're having a, so we absorb, we tried to absorb and move, and you tried to implement what happened then. We've, we've had several big issues in there that needed implementation and movement. We're meeting, we have a holiday Monday. Board officers meet with Dr. Melton Tuesday afternoon. We're not meeting with her during the work. We're gonna be with her that afternoon. Last time we met, we went four hours.
Yeah, that's, no.
Hammered out. Now, here's, here's something positive that's going on.
Yeah.
For the last year or so, we've been getting out, usually it's been a paper copy with notes on it of what the proposed agenda is. Sometimes we can't fill in all the blanks.
Right.
Until we know who can come, who can do what.
Right.
Michael Cates is helping us a lot. He's putting it out a lot quicker, giving bullet points. But at the end of the day, Tuesday night, we meet.
Yeah.
Sometime later Tuesday night, if we're lucky, that goes out, but that board package gotta go out Thursday. We meet the next Monday. It's, it's a, you know.
It's a lot.
We're on a train.
It's tough on your administration, because if you're meeting every two weeks, that's all they're doing.
Yeah, they're spending time preparing packets.
Right.
Especially by paper, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. So, that, that's something for y'all just to discuss as a board, to decide. And the other thing is, is it imperative? I mean, I don't know what business you have that would require you to meet every other week. I mean, is there enough, or can it wait? And that's, that's a district, 'cause I have no idea what, what is going, you know, that kind of thing. So, that's something for y'all to discuss. All right, so, I do wanna move on quickly.
Looks like by vote, we made it.
We probably have been over a lot of this already. We've already, we've already kinda talked about this. I will address the board approves contracts with personnel. On the recommendation of your superintendent. Your, the only person you hire or fire is your superintendent. You don't hire your football coach, you don't hire your high school principal, you don't hire your literacy coach, you hire your superintendent. Now, if you don't like the people she's hiring, and they're not doing a good job, your problem's with her, not them. So, that is one of the biggest things that school districts, school boards have a problem with initially. And I will, I will tell you, when I was on the school board, we were, we were in our delegate assembly where we adopt our resolutions, and one of them always deals with the board's role in hiring personnel. And I had a board member from, I won't even name the district, school board up in the upper part of the state, on the west side, who stood up and said, "Are you telling me that the board can't hire the football coach?" I said, "Exactly." I said, "You have no business hiring your football coach." So, we've, we've got an issue in our county right now where, and, and I'll tell you why, and this is why. There are so many laws around employment and hiring and firing. You don't wanna get in that as a board. You, you don't wanna be there. And our, a, a board near where I am told that the superintendent had already said that the athletic director could stay, and the football coach could stay, even though he hadn't had a good record in a couple of years. They gave him perform, you know, "You gotta do these things if you wanna stay." Agreement, all that. The board, the next week, told him to fire the football coach. So, he did. And they, the board decided that they wanted to make it open to hire football coaches, that if that football coach wanted to be the athletic director, then they would get rid of the current athletic director, who had excellent evaluations and was female. Okay? So, that, that female A.D.'s not stupid, and so, nor is the female principal of that school. And so, they tried to tell the superintendent, "This is, can't do this." And so, months and a half later, superintendent finally met with the athletic director and handed her the resumes of football coach resumes that have applied, and said, "Take care of it." Which is the way it should've been. Athletic director would hire the football coach. Now, it ain't over, I'm sure, but, I mean, the, the point I'm saying about that, if you get involved in personnel issues, you are setting yourself up personally and the board up for lawsuits. I mean, you've got to be very careful. And, yes.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, you were in mid-sentence.
No, go ahead.
I was gonna say, for our new board members, I hope you're getting this, but what Lenny just described, we get a publication from School Board Association every day, and it's the news clips. What she just described is played out, and you'll see situations all over the state with budgets and other things. It, it's educational. I read them every day. Things you don't wanna do that somebody else has already stubbed their toes.
That's right.
That should be what it's called.
I'm, there again, I'm a little bit confused, because we have an executive session, probably, I've been to three board meetings, and I think we've had Personnel Assistant Superintendent there in each one of them. Okay, and they present this chart, and the chart has positions that are open, and the positions that are filled, and the reason why, and all this. Okay, so then they, they ask us to basically approve that.
That's right.
But why would we have to approve it if the superintendent is placed the person that she thinks is, is, you know, the right person for the job?
Yes.
You know, in, in that, well, I mean, if we have no say in that, what are we doing? I mean, that's what I, I mean, I don't understand that.
Your, your fiduciary relationship with the school district, the law requires the school board to approve all hiring within the district. It's contracts.
Oh, it's the money, not the money part, not the position.
Well, it, it's contractual. So, the school board approves all contracts. And so, you know, usually in January, I think, you hire the superintendent. I mean, you, you re, you know.
What I'm asking is, suppose I looked down on that list, and I'd had somebody on there that maybe in a past life had, you know, been in the construction business and wasn't honorable. It wouldn't, I couldn't say, right there.
You could bring it up, and, and, yes, you could bring that up, because it could be something that, that they may not know about.
Okay.
And so, they may say, "We didn't know about that? Let me check that out." But it's for them to check out, not you, but you brought it to their attention. So, a proven hiring of personnel upon the superintendent's recommendation is what you do.
Okay.
Again, not getting to, you're not responsible for hiring the principal, or you're not responsible for hiring the literacy coach, et cetera.
You're right.
You go on her recommendation. Again, she, she is the person that the board hires and fires. Everybody else is, you approve their contracts.
Right.
Because that's what the board's supposed to do.
So, basically, what we're looking as contractual, it's not about the position being filled.
Right.
Okay, I got you.
Correct.
Lenny, I'd love to just give an example, and it, two different things. On the, the twelve years I've served, and it was, it was when maybe no one in here but Robert and Ed, if you was in here, but one time, one time, I've seen, and actually, it was the chair, brought up something about one of the people that was on the list, and explained it to the superintendent, and that name was pulled, you know, because of whatever the information was. And, and, but the superintendent made that decision, you know, not the board.
That's right, yes.
Once they told what they knew. I can tell you another example, and, and it works beautifully. I had known about a teacher that I taught with, and all I did is I let the superintendent know it.
Sure.
She investigated it, or he.
That's right.
And then they came to us and pulled that name.
That's right.
But, but I, I'll tell you what Dr. Heffner told me, if I can repeat him. He said, "Jan Hammond, it is your responsibility as a board that if you know one thing about somebody that could be harmful to children..."
Sure.
Your, 'cause I felt terrible, I caused this poor young girl, I could get a job, probably, 'cause she'd been hired.
Right.
And, but he said, "Uh-uh. What you know and you've told me, and we checked out.
Sure.
You have to look after the student, not her, Willby."
Yeah, and what y'all are saying is exactly right. It's, it's not that your communication is with the superintendent.
That was the key.
Exactly. And, and we, we had a situation in our, this wasn't really about hiring and firing, but it was about moving a, a person to a different school. Well, this, this particular person had been at this school for like twenty-two years, and our superintendent wanted to move that person up to a different school that really, really needed that person's leadership and expertise. That's why it was, it had nothing to do about anything else, except it was what was right for the kids. Well, the board started getting phone calls from teachers within that school. "How dare you even try to move Ms. Smith," whatever her name was, you know? But every phone call that every single member of our board got, got the same answer from us. "We're supporting the superintendent's decision because we need her at that school." Phone calls stopped, okay? And we're gonna talk about phone calls in a minute, too. Worst thing you can ever say on, somebody calls you, "I'll take care of that." 'Cause your phone will ring off the hook forever and ever and ever. So, but what you're saying, Jan, is honestly, if, if you have information about someone, or whatever, you just, yeah, you share that with, you just call the superintendent and say, "Hey, you know, I know you're considering so-and-so. This is an issue. I'm just, I'm just telling you. I'm not telling you to hire him, I'm not telling you, not, I'm just giving you the information." And then they have to make that decision.
And Lenny, this is kinda different, but I say this for new board members. This was three superintendents ago, but, but I was, I was, I was pleased that it works the way you're saying. I remember just going to him and saying, "We are having so," or "I'm having so many complaints about a principal at X school."
Yeah.
And I said, "No, I don't know," 'cause I didn't even really know the principal. But I got it over and over and over, okay? So, I told that person.
Sure.
And I didn't tell any, I didn't tell the board, I just told the superintendent.
That's right, that's right.
And I'll never forget, he still will see me when I see him, and tell me, "Jan, I checked that out."
Yeah.
And it was merit to it. And he had changed that principal, and the school flourished. So.
And see, that's where your...
That's, I'm just trying to give that example.
And, and that's where your representation of the public, it's just how you share that information. You're not talking about it out with other people, you're giving it to your, your chief administrative officer, your superintendent, for them to then do with it what they need to do. Yeah. I mentioned about budget, so we'll talk about that a little bit later, too. Now, again, your superintendent and your staff will, will say what type of evaluation criteria that they're using for your information, and for you to approve that. And again, we're talking about representing the public interest, but they, they evaluate the personnel, and they act in the public interest of the public. Superintendent carries out the day-to-day operations in the district, makes recommendations to the board, the board discusses, deliberates, and sets policy. The effective leadership team operates within a foundation of mutual trust, respect, and partnership. We'll talk about that a little bit later. That's something that has to build. That's not automatic. Just 'cause you ran for school board, and you won, you're sitting here, doesn't mean everybody's gonna think you're hunky-dory. You've got to prove, you've got to show them that you're here for the right reason, and that you act, again, with mutual respect of everybody else. We're all individuals, and we're never going to agree on everything. But it's how we discuss those issues, and how we interact with each other to get our points across, is what matters. And it, it's kinda like, you know, the golden rule's my favorite thing. Treat others as you want to be treated. So, if you, if you practice that, that's, that's a good, a good thing. Talking about day-to-day operations, I remember, one of the first things that came up when I got on the school board was somebody was complaining about a particular bus route, or bus driver, or whatever. I'm like, "Well, I'm just gonna go follow that bus." "Well, no." That's not what I did, though.
Well, at least you didn't ride the bus.
Exactly, but I didn't. But I'm just like, that was my first thought. Well, let me go see what they're doing. No.
She's a rebel, isn't she?
So, I called, so I called up Ed, and I said, "Hey, Ed, I just got, you know, superintendent, I said, just got this call." So, anyway, they took care of it, so. And they, I will read all these. I'm gonna send this PowerPoint to Robert. He can share that with the rest of you when we're done. Your, your superintendent is your chief instructional leader, and she is the one that implements or makes certain that what's implemented are the district goals, your policies, et cetera. And she puts together the best staff she can put together to make that happen. It's kinda like, and I, I don't like using athletic analogies, but it works. So, if you hire a football coach, it's superintendent hires a football coach. But then she tells him, "I want you to hire Billy as your offensive coordinator, and John as your defensive coordinator." Totally takes, he has no accountability, and he can't be held accountable for winning a state championship. If you're telling the same thing, superintendent, if you're saying, "We need to hire Joe over here for Erville High School principal," then you've just disempowered her, like we talked about a while ago. All too often, school board members are like firefighters on the ground, fighting the flames, when you should be in a helicopter. Thirty thousand dollar feet, thirty thousand dollar level, thirty thousand feet level. That's what you need to think about. You need to figure out what way the wind is blowing, what the resources are that are needed to be deployed, how big is the fire? If you're on the ground, you can't see all that, and that's where you need to be. There's another story about a couple of people, and they're, they're standing by a river, and these babies start floating down the river in baskets. They're sitting there, "What is going on?" And so, one is out there trying to pull all the babies in, and the other one takes off running uphill. "Where are you going? I'm going to try to find out why the babies are in the river." That's where you need to be headed. That's where you need to be headed. Good team, and I refer to boards as teams, because you are a team. So, know the goals. You have to consider the goals above your personal interests. Strive to reach the goals and solve problems in the right way, understand your roles, and are active decision-makers. A lot of times, boards will sometimes feel like they're rubber stamps. You're not, because you, you need information, you need to ask questions, and you need to stay on top of what's going on. This is a tough one, and we're gonna talk about it a little bit later, too. The board, all board members should support the majority opinion. Take responsibility for successes and failures as a board. Don't throw somebody under the bus, 'cause something didn't happen, you didn't like, and you didn't agree with, but you're part of this board, so you're responsible. Respect everyone and have a team spirit. We're, we're gonna talk about majority vote in a little bit. This is a hard one. Change comes slowly, unfortunately. For example, three readings on a policy, that's slow. I mean, think about it. So, and that's just approving a policy. Then you gotta implement it. But change does come slowly, and, and if, those of you who've been on the board get that. And those of you who just come on, you're, you're gonna have to understand that. You can't solve everyone's problems. You, you have to work with your other board members. Sometimes you need to accept a compromise, you know? Sometimes, there are issues, there are very few, where I would just, vouchers. Line in the sand for me. There is no compromise on that, in my mind. But most things you can compromise on, you can find compromise. Learn to disagree agreeably and back the majority vote. You're not all gonna have a seven-oh vote all the time. I went through four years of four-three votes on my board. Fortunately, I was on the fourth, no, I'm just kidding. But it wasn't fun. I mean, you want the board to be united, but you're not always gonna be united. And it's okay if you're not. And it's okay if you're not, if you have data and you're making a decision that you think is right and you're in the negative. It's okay. But you, but you've got to then, you've got to support the board's position. So, and, and don't argue. I mean, there are some boards that yell at each other. That is not what you want to do. And I know this board doesn't act like that. But there are boards in other parts of the state where they like yell at each other. And how does that look? We talked about ethical behavior and how your operation and how you act at a board meeting sets the tone for your district. We had a, Jan might remember. I don't know if Beth was around, but there was a, um, school board. Dan, I forgot what county it was. Might've been Fairfield. I can't remember. The board chair pulled a friggin knife out on the board member.
Oh, my goodness.
Now, that's extreme. Or, or there, there are times when people will stand up, stomp out of the room. Well, when you walk out of the room, you've just advocated your role at the table. And so, there're gonna be times, there're, there're heated discussions. I understand that, but try to be civil and disagree agreeably and then back the majority vote. And that's tough. Yes.
Um, when you're talking about the, uh, backing the majority vote, sometimes it's hard because you just don't believe in it.
Right.
But, um, is it, if the minority, um, is, said, well, I didn't support that, do they have an obligation to go back to the people who contacted them, maybe in public, and explain, you know, or explain to the public, well, this is why I disagreed with the majority vote? Or how would you interpret that?
There's no, um, there's no need to go back and explain it publicly. People may ask you, and, and, and it's not to say, I didn't agree with that particular vote, but the board has voted in the affirmative to move forward with this and I will support that decision moving forward. You don't have to like it. But outwardly, here, here's the other thing. I don't know how many times you go to the grocery store and everybody's coming up to you and they're going, oh, my gosh, over at Sanders Elementary, we've got all these problems, dah, 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 dah. You know there's, there are problems there. But as a board member, we're gonna talk about advocacy later. How I would respond to that, I wouldn't get down in that conversation with them, even if I knew there were issues. I would say, we are aware of those issues and our district and the board are trying to address those. And we're trying to make things better. Don't, don't like fan the flames, even if you, if you know their problems. Be an advocate for that the district is trying to fix those problems and move forward. Don't say, oh, yeah, that teacher's horrible. I can't believe she works over there. I can't believe, you know, they let this person act this way and all that. Don't do that. Don't throw your fellow board members under the bus and don't throw your superintendent under the bus. But acknowledge that there are issues. We did, I mean, I did. Yeah, we know, we, I under, we know that there's some issues there. But this is what we're trying to do to fix them. And we're trying to move forward to do that. That, that's what you, you know, when you, when you go out and we, we had a board member who used to almost just hold press conferences. All that does is demean your district, it demeans your board, and it undermines what you, what the majority agree is the right direction for you to go. He eventually stopped that. And I'm gonna tell you, it was a game changer. He didn't always agree with us. And he some, he was typically in the minority vote. But he learned that he had to support what the district was doing. And once he did that, even his constituents came around. Because he was able to explain that this is why we have to move this way. And we may not like it, but this is what we're doing. And so, that's tough. It's really, really tough. And I think, um, I, I believe your board is nonpartisan, right? And so, and, and most school boards are nonpartisan, but there are some partisan. It's, it's tough when it's that. Because, but, but because you're nonpartisan, your focus is on what's best for children. And that's where you're coming from. And so, you don't have to say, well, here's the party line, or here's the caucus line, or here's the whatever. You're, you don't have that agenda. And so, um, anyway.
Lenny.
Yes.
Back to what Beth asked.
Yes.
Several of your examples, we, that's, a lot of that's happened in this district before. We've had, we have had people that call a news conference. We've had people that can't leave a vote.
Yeah.
And there's gotta be a way. I hope we'll all learn that today. We got to move on from that. And I think it keeps those fires smoldering when, when you, when you're telling people, and Beth said this, and it's the truth.
Yeah.
It's addressed again, over and over sometimes at our board table, a month, six months, a year later, and it doesn't need to be. It doesn't help the people, the, the people out there that don't understand all the information that we have as a board.
Sure.
That just keeps them fired up and they hear it again. So, I appreciate you bringing it up, Beth. It's, it's real.
Well, and, and, and that happens in every district.
Yeah.
At some point in time, it happens in every district. Because individuals like you have run for school board because you're passionate about education and about children. Your passion is driven from different places perhaps, but the bottom line is what's best for the children. We don't make decisions that are in the best interest of adults. Took me a while to get that. But I did, I got it. And that was when, and I gave an example about that teacher being moved to another school. That was not a, that was not a decision that was made to make adults happy. That decision was made because those kids needed that person at that school. And so, when you think about making decisions, it's not about what's gonna make, you know, um, Bob Hill, who's, you know, whatever, county council member. It's about Johnny, who's sitting in that chair in the third grade classroom. What's best for him? Those are the difficult things. So, child-focused, data-driven decisions is what. You know, if you can do that, if you can agree upon that as a board, you're gonna like, take, take off. Discovering how the district is funded is the biggest mystery of all times. School finance is so very complicated. And the people who pass the school district funding stuff at the state level don't understand it either. So. Just know that your people in your district office who deal with finance, they are the experts. They understand it. They get it. And so, if you have questions, that's where you go. Because it, it's very complicated. But do try to understand some of it, if, if you can. I'm gonna stop here. We're gonna take a little break and then we'll come back. Does that work? So, we're gonna get back on task. I could've probably waited till after this slide because it moves into something else. But still, difficult things to learn. Um, determining your role and responsibility. Realizing you have so much to learn. There is a ton to learn and it is a process. This one is biggie. Learning to acknowledge that you have no power as an individual, only as a board. You, outside of this boardroom at a duly-called meeting, you are Joe Blow. You have no authority. You have no power or anything unless you're sitting at a duly-called school board meeting with your fellow board members. So, and we're gonna talk about visiting schools in a little bit, but when you go walking into school, and, and honestly, I had kids in school when I was on the board. And so, and I'm not, I'm not pretentious at all. So, when I walked into school, I was Ben's mama.
Right.
Well, not in the eyes of those people in that school, I was Lenny Patterson's school board member. And I hated that because I didn't want, you know, I was just, I was there to help. I was there to be mama in the classroom and whatever. You should know that, but other people don't necessarily know that. That you, as an individual, have no power or authority. Everybody sees you as a board member and thinks all kind of things. Mostly good, I hope. So, just, just remember that. As far as actions, um, decisions, et cetera, unless you're sitting in a board meeting, at a duly-called school board meeting, you have no power and no authority. Recognizing the difference between policy administration, we've talked a good bit about that today. Learning to represent all your constituents. Again, I think because, um, you are fortunate enough to be in a nonpartisan, uh, board, you don't have to answer to a party. And, um, uh, you do have all kind of constituents with all kinds of, um, opinions and thinking and et cetera. And so, you have to, you have to learn to represent all of them. And single-member districts, is that, y'all in single-member districts at large?
At large per county. So, cause we're two counties.
Yes, yes.
We are Lexington at large, Richland at large.
Gotcha. So, um, in our district, we were single-member districts. And so, the other hard thing to learn is you might've been elected from that district, but your decisions affect the whole district. So, whether you're from Lexington or Richland, the decisions the board makes affects both. So, you have to think that way. And, and we, we talked a little bit about responding appropriately to complaints. Again, and we're gonna talk about chain and command a little bit, but, um, you know, don't get down in the, in the dirt with people who are, who are criticizing your district. Because sometimes they have no validity whatsoever. So, don't get caught up in that and don't flame the fires. You know, say, thank you so much for bringing that to my attention. I'll share it with our superintendent and we'll, we'll see what we can do to address that. Four roles, basic four roles that you have. Set the vision for the district. Make sure that the structure is there to make the vision and the goals happen. You're accountable for making certain that those, the vision is, is reached. And you should be an advocate for public education and for the children in your schools. And we're gonna talk about each of those a little bit. Board keeps students at the focus of schools. You adopt a shared vision. And a lot of times that comes from, um, a, a process that typically will involve, uh, in, uh, people from the community, from your schools, parents, civic leaders, et cetera. And that again is a process. It might not be happening right now because you've just gotten on the board, but it could've happened two or three years ago. And so, but those things happen over and over again throughout the, the time you may be on the board. But you want a shared vision that's bought into by not only the board and the, and the school system, but the people in your community as well. You demonstrate your commitment to that vision and mission by, uh, using them to guide decision-making. Again, if, if you're brought an idea, well, how is this gonna help? Ask the question. So, how does this get us to here? Is this necessary? Those types of things. Those are appropriate questions. Providing the structure. So, um, you've gotta make sure that the district management system is what's gonna, what's gonna be the best to enable the district to get to where they need to be. You adopt policies that also support getting there. You have long and short-term objectives. Um, you review those annually. Some of them require a review more than annually. But y'all decide what those, those are. Um, and again, in conjunction with the superintendent. You'll be making decisions about supporting student learning and student school renewal. Approve high instructional standards in line with your vision and state standards. And you encourage an environment for innovative teaching and learning. You know, what is, what are the culture, what are the cultures within your schools? And does that, uh, push for innovation and learning at high levels? Um, very important. Accountability, um, the board's accountable for, uh, school district performance. You're, you're the, uh, the buck stops with you. You'll want to get regular reports on student progress. Again, it's kinda like doing, uh, personnel evaluations. You don't wanna wait twelve months to see, you know, and talk to this person if you had issues all, all along the way. You, you'll wanna get regular reports and you will get those, I'm sure, on how things are going. You'll evaluate the superintendent. And there's also, School Board Association has a board evaluation, a self-evaluation process. And what I, what we did at one point, the way it works, and I guess they still do it. I've, I've not been around SSB recently, but, um, the first assessment, includes your individual assessment of yourself and then assessment of the board as a whole. There's also a quick assessment that you could use after every school board meeting to assess how you did, at how the board did during that meeting. We did that and it was very helpful. Um, it, it just kept reminding people of all that stuff we just talked about and, and, uh, good board behavior. If you're interested in that, I would talk to school boards about that. It's a, it's a, it's a really good process. What I would suggest is that you wait, um, for your new members to have been on the board at least a year or so, so that you've got some, some continuity and, and, um, knowledge of how things work. You evaluate the progress towards your, um, goals and ensure the policies and resources effectively support that vision. And then, by law, you're required to report your progress to, I guess they still do that, the yearly report to the community. Uh, you do that. And again, what I would say is if, if it's appropriate not to wait a whole year to tell them what's going on, tell them however way the school district decides to communicate that. But, um, communicating with your public, and I'm really talking more from the school district, not the board, communicate with the public. But, uh, the more you can communicate about what's going on and what the goals are and how you're doing, the better off you're gonna be to get buy-in from, from your community. And advocacy. Um, I was very pleased, uh, when y'all were introducing yourselves this morning and why you ran for the school board. Sounds to me like you're all running for the right reasons. You are advocates for children and you're advocates for public education. It's, it's so important. And when you're out in the public, you need to speak that way. You need to talk about the importance of public education. You're sitting on a, a board of public schools, okay? There are some boards that have people on, who've run for a public school board who support private education and vouchers, et cetera. You know, that's not what you're here, that's not what you're here about. Yes.
That, that subject just came up for me. This, this district seems to have a lot of people that homeschool, okay? And, and we've tried to, you know, to bring them in by, by allowing their children, I think, to play in athletic, you know, situations. And other things, you know, that, that are not, you know, to be part of the community, but they're not, they're not part of the school system.
Right.
Okay? And then, um, the question, you know, advocacy for the board and then for your constituents. You know, sometimes those people seem to be thinking they're left out of being the constituents. And it's, you know, it's, that's, to me, strange to, you know, to be talk, you know. I do advocate for public education, but then you're talking with somebody that, that absolutely does not want, you know, believe in public education because they've withdrawn their children, but there are a lot of them.
Yeah.
So, you know, we need to include them also in, in how we're making decisions. And I, I, I have a, I'm pulled apart by that. I don't know how to answer that, you know?
Well, I think.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah. In, individuals have, some individuals have choices with their educational choices for their children. Others don't really because they don't have resources or transportation or anything else. And so, um, if, if an individual wants to homeschool their children or send their school to private schools, that's their, that's their prerogative. But you're not responsible for the quality of that homeschool program and you're not responsible for that private school. You're responsible for the quality of the K-12 schools. And so, you know, to try to include them is fine, but, but, but you're not necessarily responsible for their choices to the homeschool.
For example, we have a, we have one school, uh, that used to be over there on Lexington, Old Lexington, that was Whitmore. Okay? That's not part of our school district. Okay? That's a, that's a online school. Okay? But anyway, it's, and that's, but is it, are we responsible in any way for that, that charter school is what I'm saying? You know? So, we don't have any charter, some, some places, the charter school is in, under the school district and some places, it's under the state of South Carolina, right?
May I, wait on that.
Yes.
I'll use Green Charter as an example, just right down the road from Dutchwork Elementary. They are completely separated from us. They are under the governing board of their state association for their charter schools. So, they didn't, they didn't reach out to school district five before they came in. We didn't know they were coming in. They already purchased the property. They are completely separate from us. So, those schools that we're responsible for are twenty-three schools that we have.
Okay. I, I, but I, I just didn't, I just noticed this charter school that's down there called J.C. Whitmore and it's a online school. And I know nothing about it.
Is there, is strictly online? There's no building, no?
It's a very small little place. It's, it's like, uh, about as big as a maybe two thousand square foot office, you know?
And it's on Old Lexington Road.
It used to be, and I don't know where they moved it. Nikki, you know, you know where it's moved?
I know where it is now, yeah.
But they, they, they outgrew that or something and they moved. But anyway, I just, I just wanna know, was that part of, under? Cause some districts, the charter schools are part of the district.
That's, that's those that are sponsored by the district. We don't, we don't.
We don't sponsor any, okay. All right.
That is very confusing.
Yeah, it is.
You have a state charter school. I mean, it's just, the biggest, we mentioned this green school right next door to Dutchwork Elementary, which is a, an environmentally, that's the whole theme and choice of that school.
Yeah.
And these people within a thousand feet of them, or two thousand feet.
Well, and, and the thing is, I think as time goes, you're gonna see more and more of that. And you're gonna have more and more online. I mean, the state online school, whatever, that virtual school. I mean, it grows every year. And, and all I'll say about that is all children don't learn the same way. And some children need different situations. But public schools, I mean, we're restricted by our funding to, to sometimes to offer everything to everybody, but we do our best to do that. I mean, that's your job. And that's, you know, all the children of your district have a right to attend your schools. And, but parents do have choices and they make those choices, but you don't, this board doesn't control those schools or those entities.
All I'm saying though is that, that you're elected by the people of the county that you ran in.
Right.
Those people are in that county, even though they may not want to participate in public schools. But do, do we still look at them as our constituents? And that's the question I'm asking.
One thing.
You know?
Go ahead, Michael.
For me, that, that is, who are, who are my constituents? And it comes back to where I've heard you mention several times is those that elect me, they elect me to serve the seventeen thousand plus students of our district, of our school district. And while there might be voters that choose not to participate in our, in our district, I'm elected to serve the students of our, our district.
Correct. And, and indirectly, the success of your public schools and. And indirectly, the success of your public schools and how children are educated and, and they're being educated successfully to come out, get a job, go to college or whatever, impacts the whole community.
That's right.
So indirectly, they are your constituents, but I think what Michael makes a good point. Your focus however, is, is what the district is doing to educate those 17,000 students.
Right, right, but I mean, it, you know, we want our public schools to serve all the children.
Sure.
And we don't necessarily want all these fragmented, other those schools that may not, may or may not have the same opportunities that we do.
That's right.
So in order to keep that from happening, then, then I think we need to have those people be our constituents because that way we don't, we don't foster a reason for them to open up a new school, I guess is what I'm trying to say. Does that make sense?
The best you can do with that is you can, you, you offer the best educational program you can in your district. And that, that's the best you can do about trying to bring them on board. Because people, people make educational choices for their children for all kinds of reasons. Even if you've got the best school district in the state, they've got, whoever that, you are, one of the best.
I'd like to go on record to say I think we have the best in the state.
Yes, you do, yeah. And then you do, don't, don't make me wrong. You, you have an excellent school system. And, and even in an excellent school system, you're still going to have parents who are going to choose to educate the children another way. And so, but, but what you can do is try to make the, just have the best school district you can, offer the best educational program that you can.
Lenny, you touched on this and I know you're going to touch a little bit more, but I think where Ken is, is, is the real truth, where Michael focuses is true. But we also have those groups that, and, and this is just personal preference too, that they talk about vouchers and credits.
Yes.
And I really don't have a tremendous problem with that, but it always involves the current dollars in the system.
Yes.
It's fun.
Yep.
There's never a solution other than it erodes the public dollar.
Yeah.
So that's the, that's the pitfall. Until somebody can help fix that. Because as soon as we embrace that and we, oh, then first thing we know, our public dollars that are already limited end up in that coffre. I believe in choice and all of that, but it, it, I don't believe in one dollar.
Moving the money.
No, I don't.
Well, and, and-
That's the issue.
Well, they're looking at that, Governor McMaster group, they're, they're funding the whole thing as well.
So, so in Little Clinton, South Carolina, District 56, they've got like 3,500 students. They got one high school, one middle school, three or four elementary schools. Thornwell Home for Children is there and they used to have a private school. They shut it down several years ago for various reasons. They are fixing to open a charter school, K through five charter school that are added gear, grade every year. They're not under the state charter system. They're under Erskine College now is an authority, yeah. Which is a whole nother ballgame, but point being is they may enroll, I don't know how many people, how many students, okay? But out of a 3,500 school system, they can enroll and take like 10 students from the third grade. But that's not a classroom. And they could come from different class, that, you can't reduce teachers because you still got, you've still got to serve those other. So you're serving the same, you know, you're having to pay the same amount that you were last year but you have fewer students and fewer funding coming to you because the funding follows a kid. So I think it's going to be, I mean, I'm all about choice too. It's going to hurt our local school district in that way because of the funding. And so there just needs to be a way to figure that out. And, but I don't want to get, that's a, for me, that's a whole nother.
Lenny, can I ask you something? It just made me wonder. Do we have a way to know, through the district and your office, to know the number of our kids that are on the virtual schools? I, I'm just curious how that has worked. I've known some teachers that went out to, and did that and then didn't like it and went back into the classroom. I, I just been curious as to what.
Well, when I was a principal, I actually had a teacher whose husband was relocated. So she went from teaching in a public school to doing the online school and said to me she could teach in her pajamas from home with her child at home with her. And this one problem is all she had to do was just take a child and drop them from class because they weren't responding quickly enough to her questions. So we try, our numbers are as good as the self-reporting. So as soon as families let us know what's happening, then we can make changes. We have numbers of, for our homeschooling piece of how many kids have gone where, as long as we have that updated information. We have information about who all leads us to go to a school down the road such as Green Charter, but we also have information of when they return to us. So we had a magnet fair, our second of the year, last Thursday night and had another record-setting number. We broke two records this academic year. And we've heard people say, I homeschool my children, or we're looking, move into the area and we want to come see what this is like so I can be better informed. So there is information, but it's got to make sure that people are reporting it so that we know that there's a family residing here and that they've chosen to this other option.
Well, the money, Tom, if, if they're in, living in our district and they're in a state, the virtual school that state provides, do we get any money? That, that child's not in our town?
Not only that, there's not a compulsory way to report that. So we really, there are estimates of how many homeschool students may live in our community, but there's no law that says you have to register with this authority or entity and that gets reported to the district. So we know how to plan for extracurricular activities that may, we only know when they show up or someone leaves a district or comes back. Or asks for special services, so.
Which is a whole nother animal.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just was interested.
Yeah, I want to move on that one because, yeah, I could talk about that all day. One of the things, one of the ways to, to be an advocate for public education is to celebrate the achievements of students and your, and your teachers. At our school board meetings, we always met in schools, in the summer we might meet in the district office, but we always met at a school. We started every school board meeting with a, with a student something. It could be a performance, it could be recognizing the top 10 of the whatever, something. So we always start with children and what that did were several things. One, it called attention to the, to the achievements of what was happening in that school and it also set the tone for our board meeting because we started it with children and that was the focus. And so that worked extremely well for us. And the schools loved it, the kids were excited to be there. I mean, it was really, it was, it was a great thing to do. But you want to do that, whether it's through bringing, bringing students before the board to recognize them, like when you have the Duke Scholars Program or whatever, or you get a national merit finalist or something like that, to bring them, bring them before the board to recognize them publicly. And teachers who win awards and who are teacher district of the, district teachers of the year and all that kind of stuff, celebrate that in some manner. That's the best way to advocate, is to talk about the good stuff that's happening in your district. We've talked about some of these, we're going to run, I'm going to try to run through these a little bit because we have talked about some of them. The world's not going to change overnight, your district's not going to change overnight. Just because somebody doesn't agree with you does not mean they're not intelligent. And wanting to learn everything immediately, it takes a while. So just be patient, it takes a while. It does take at least a year and honestly, your four, four-year terms, it, it really takes two to really get a sense of the cycles and how things work within a district and what happens when. Try to understand where the other person's coming from, okay? Because again, each of you are here for the right reasons, but different people are motivated by different things. Other people, and, and the other thing is you might have somebody on your board who is great with like bullet points about something, but somebody else needs all the data, okay? Not everybody, but, but get that. And so if you've got somebody who just needs all the data, give them the data. But, but understand that. And again, you don't, we talked about earning respect a while ago and it's like that in life. I mean, you don't, you don't earn credibility, you don't earn respect right off the bat. You can't shake the hourglass. I mean, time's not going to go by faster and things aren't going to change very quickly. We talked about bad behavior of some school board members. Don't throw temper tantrums. Certainly don't use off-color language, don't throw things. These are like duh's, but school boards do this. I mean, they, unfortunately, there are some who do these things. Never threaten anybody, but particularly a, a board member. Don't insult your fellow board members or your staff or whatever. And honestly, the people will fall asleep during a board meeting, so just don't do that. I have seen that happen before.
I have something to say on that, on this issue.
What, fall asleep?
No, but we have people using texting and doing that in the middle of board meeting.
Yeah.
And I think the chair ought to call that down and stop it because, quite frankly, I'd leave your telephone in the car because that's, that's an insult because what that does is tell the children that it's okay for them to do it, but, but not, but not the child.
I do that and, and honestly, even in, in, in your work life, you know, if you're in a meeting, you, you know, you don't need your phone. We actually, I, at one point I was on the president's cabinet at PC and it was right when, I'm telling my age, right when all that kind of started. And so people would be there with the phone and the president said, put it down, we're, no phones, you know? And so it, it is a little disrespectful to what's going on and be, because you need to be in the moment and being there. So as a board, you decide that and if you don't want people to use phones, it's a good, good thing.
And I was called out a little bit on that, so I'm going to address it slightly. About a year ago, Michael Cates, maybe earlier than that, Mike Cates was a very green young board member. Michael's Mr. Technology.
Yes.
And I heard, Ken, I heard what you said, the phones. But there are people that conduct everything on a phone or on a device.
Yeah.
I'll follow up, I know where you're talking, I know where you're going. But Michael was called out for being somewhere else and, and I had to hold Michael back to not, and he was called out. I don't know if it was public participation or what, but it was all-
I was taking notes to make sure we get those questions answered, yeah.
Exactly. And, and, and I have done that in meetings as well, my phone, I have done that. So I think if you're going to do that, you just made us want to say, I am, I'm not texting, I'm taking notes so that I remember because it is electronic and I do a lot of that, so.
But I do remember that, but I do think even a phone, I do it myself, I'll have, I'll have items on there or-
That's right, and, and, yeah.
But I will tell you this, this shouldn't offend me at all. I shouldn't care what the audience does.
Yeah.
We have people that come spend hours with us at a board meeting.
Yeah.
And I watch them the whole time and they're texting. And I'm thinking, you're not texting anybody on this board table, but why did you come in the first place?
Yeah. Well, that, that's something for y'all to deal with individually. And if you have somebody who's text savvy, who uses their phone or an iPad or whatever and they're on it, don't assume then I guess that they're not doing the right thing, but y'all, y'all have to govern that yourselves. Know that when board members act out, they're usually doing it because they're frustrated. You know, are they frustrated because they don't have the information they need? Are they frustrated, you know, whatever? So understand that a little bit. But I, I think this number two, act the same way you would expect children in your care to behave. If you keep that in mind, how do you want your ki, how do you want the children who's sitting in that seat and for that teacher to behave? And if you, now you can talk, but, you know, but think about that because they're watching you too. Parents are watching you, community leaders are watching you, children are watching you. And honor the code of ethics and I think hopefully y'all get, get a copy of this.
Lenny, I know Robert and I were talking about this and he said, you know, I should say it. Sometimes it's so not the words you say. The words you're saying are good or they're, you know, they make a good point, they're not rude words. But your tone.
Yes.
The tone, if it's condescending
Right.
or basically, you know, that you feel you're being treated rude and we're, we're all peers. And, and no one person is more important than the other. And, you know, the chair runs the meeting. I, I don't think people, you know, like I certainly don't just need to not look at Robert and then go, well, you know what? Ken, you're, you know, like we've got to do the decorum.
That's right.
That, which would help all of that, help the frustration.
Well, and, and you're right. It's how you say things, not necessarily what you say. And so tone makes a difference and a lot of times when you're calm and you express your opinion, you're going to get a whole lot better because as soon as you're, you're hostile towards someone, the wall gets up. And so it's diff, again, it's civility and respect and that type of thing.
Lenny, that's also true though, not just our tone, but our body language, the side, the cross-talk, the rolling the eyes, the shaking the heads, the, you know, all of that. And I, I sometimes think we need a big mirror where we're having to see ourselves.
Yes.
But all of that plays in.
Sure.
And it, and all that does when we, when we participate in that, in all of us, is it undermines the credibility of the board.
That's right.
And, and makes it more difficult
Yes.
for us to do what's already a difficult job.
One, one of the things, I'm going to talk about it when we just talk about Robert's rules in a little bit, is, is when you're, when you're in a board meeting and a board member is speaking, their, their comment should be addressed to the chair. You don't talk across the table, you don't talk to her. You talk, you make your opinion, you state your comments and you address the chair. And if, if you practice that, that eliminates sometimes a lot of that other. It, it did for us. I mean, we started operating that way, it made a huge difference. And because if you're, you know, if Michael's mad at Beth, it becomes personal. It's not about the issue on the, that you're discussing. And so that, that a lot of times will help that. And that's the chair's responsibility to say, direct your, direct your comments towards the chair. And if everybody agrees with that, then you practice that and, and everybody's on the same board.
And Lenny, at the same time, we're, we're a board meeting to conduct-
Business of the district.
The district. We shouldn't be necessarily addressing the audience for, for a political point.
That's the other thing.
Or talking point.
Yeah.
So, so I think we all have some-
Yeah.
And Michael, we do have that big mirror, everybody remember it. Ashton records every word. Go back and assess, you members included, go back and look at the last three, four meetings.
Let's, let's hold some of that and talk about it in a little bit when we talk about the Robert's rules and we'll, we'll get a little bit more on that. This is difficult. Don't publicly criticize the board after a vote. That is tough if you disagree. You can state your criticisms, your disagreements, et cetera, with your fellow board members, but try not to carry that out. All that does is just demean the board itself and, and what the district's trying to do. Do not, the wrong way, do not contribute to consensus when you disagree with an issue. Fight hard for what you believe in and then accept the will of the board and publicly support the decision of the board. You can say, I didn't necessarily agree with that decision, but I backed the decision of the board. So you can state that you didn't agree with that, but that you're going to back the decision of the board.
Now, how many times do you need to say that? That's a problem.
What's that? Like, to whom?
I didn't necessarily agree with that.
Yes.
And here's, here's where the problem comes in. And here's why. And we, and in that point, we're revisiting the issue.
Yeah.
So I think, say that one time, move on.
Yeah, that's a tough thing because typically the reason you may disagree is something that's, that's really important to you, et cetera. But you do have to wa, you, you just have to measure that and, and try not to get into the weeds.
Occasionally, that's what causes a directed comment.
Well, and the other thing-
A lot of things, a lot of things control it, but it does-
Yeah, and, and again, you're trying to get to mutual trust and respect. And if, if you're sitting at the table and then you go out and you just kind of demean or, you know, talk badly about other board, or whatever, you're not going to have that trust and you're not going to have that respect, yes.
I think part of the, and, and this has been brought up several times by especially one board member, they always talk about it, you're making it political. Well, as a government teacher, I, I can tell you, we are a political body because we're elected. And so your constituents do need an answer why you are for or against them. And if it's not you, the board member, that's going out, because everybody would like to forget it, they're happy with, I mean, they didn't, not have liked whatever the board's done, all, but they move on and, you know, whatever it is.
Right.
You, you, it's not the board's members' fault that people want to keep something alive that's really anger them. And there are certain things we've done over the 12 years I've been, that were controversial for a few weeks and it dies away.
Sure.
But there, there are things that there are more public people that, that are touched by it or involved.
Right.
And they, and they keep it going and they ask you. And you can still say, and I, I've said it many times.
Right.
You know, the board, majority rules, minority power.
Yeah.
But, but I'm, it's not me necessarily keeping it alive unless it's, you know, and I'm going to answer somebody, Lenny, if they're my constituents. And I don't have to cut down the board and say, you know, there's, that was a stupid thing or that was blah, blah, blah.
Right, right, right.
I can still say I might not have gotten the information I needed. I'd like to, I, I feel like I did wrong in the sense that I want, I'd like to get some more answers. But if it's very controversial, you can't change the fact, we are a political body. So I don't really understand somebody saying, you're playing politics. Because, because I've been defeated before because I was for or against something and somebody's managed, I don't, I don't care. I do what's best for students.
That's right.
I do what I think is right. And so I, I really don't like when a board member just puts it on, well, you just did that because it's the political, popular thing. That is not true for me personally. And I don't know about the other states, I don't know how they vote, but I vote for what I know is right.
Right. Well, and I think part, part of that is you go back to, the focus is on what's best for children, not adults, and you have data upon which decisions are made. Again, not everybody has all that data who's out there. They have their opinions, they have their personal take on it. And the other thing is you're never going to satisfy everybody. But as long as you have made a decision that is in children's best interest- But as long as you have made a decision that is in children's best interest and are data-driven, you can stand by your decision whether it's right or wrong. You, you think it's right.
But I can't make it die down.
You can't, well, no, you can't.
You can't flame it.
Not necessarily. You're, but you don't fan the flames.
I get that.
Right.
I think-
Beth, I think, was waiting here.
She's first.
Well, and, and I do think that that's a problem and it's, and, and I've seen it for a long time, is that unfortunately, people in this district are, you know, there's been a history of people after the meeting going to the public, whether media or social media, and then getting out there and going saying, "This is why I disagree," and, and they're totally wrong. And, you know, they're not supporting the majority. And it is, it's harmful. And sometimes, you know, there's, there's, you know, really some, some not very nice things said. But mainly it's, it, I feel like it's, it hurts me because it's harmful to the district. And it's harmful to the district because I think it, it, it creates distrust. And it's not that the district, oh, I'm so sorry. It, it's not that the district is, is doing anything bad, but it might be some disagreements or by the school board members.
Sure.
So that's what really upsets me the most, is the way it hurts the district. It might not, you know, being in this position, you have to develop a tough skin. And then on the second thing, so I, I really wish we didn't have that because I think that's harmful. And what was, oh, and the other thing is, I don't normally use the word constituents. My constituents are the students. And, you know, I, if people call me, if community members call me and ask questions, then I'll, I will certainly answer and try to find out answers.
Right.
You know, send them to the district. But I don't, you know, I'm not, my role, I'm not in campaign mode anymore. I've become school board mode. And so I'm trying to serve the needs of over 17,000 students. And so it hurts those students when negative things are being put out there in the media and social media.
And, and I will, I will say, this is, to me, the most difficult thing to do. Because if you're passionate about something and it's not in line with the majority of the board, it's very difficult to then go out and not, you know, just yell about that. But if, and, and again, I wanna say, everything that I'm talking about and what I'm describing is behavior of boards that are highly effective and highly operational. Doesn't mean that this stuff doesn't happen or won't happen, but if you can get to a point where that's not the norm, you will see a sea change. And in the way the public views the board, in the way you view each other. The, the other thing that I, that sometimes helps, and this helped on my board, because we, when I was, we were having those four-three votes, there was at least one person who was extremely vocal outside of the thing. And at, and at the time, I wasn't chair, but I became chair, and we were still having those four-three votes. Go have coffee with them. Go sit down with, I mean, if you and another board member have a disagreement, you know, say, you know, "Let's, let's have some coffee and let's talk about, tell me where you're coming from. So I understand your position." And that's number two. The majority should be sensitive to opposing views. Try to understand where they're coming from. I mean, that's, that's another thing. So, you know, talk to each other and, and try to understand where somebody's coming from. We all come from different backgrounds and different experiences and different expertise, et cetera. And so that's gonna come out in what we believe and all that kinda stuff. But again, if decisions by the board, by the majority of the board, are focused on what's best for kids and what's data-driven, then it's, you're gonna move the district forward. And there are always gonna be people who disagree. And we are in a society that is very politically polarized. And they, people bring that into school systems. And in my opinion, that never should be in a school system because it's not political. It is what's best for kids and it's about education. But it's made political. And so it's difficult for school board members. Fortunately, you are non, you know, you're nonpartisan. So that's one good thing, that you're not having to affiliate with a quote-unquote "party." And, and I don't wanna belabor this. This is some, you've gotta just think through this. It, it is the, one of the toughest things, I think, because you're all passionate about what you stand for and what you believe and all that kinda stuff.
Well, I, I think what Jan was alluding to was ascribing motives in, in a board meeting. I mean-
Say again now, what?
Well, we, you know, people were looking at the other person ascribing a motive to him, saying that you've got a motive for doing this or that or the other. I mean, our, all of our motives are to represent 17,000 children and for the best of them. And for somebody to ascribe a motive to somebody and pronounce that is, is not right. And then the other issue is, you know, the minor, if, if it wasn't for a minority, there wouldn't be a majority. Okay?
Yeah. And you're never gonna, and, and the other piece to it is, all of you are never gonna be on the same side of a vote. I mean, there's, there could be something that comes up that, you know, somebody who's been in the negative for a while is on the positive and you might be in the, I mean, it, it, it ebbs and it flows.
And then too, the other thing about this is, is this is a very stilted way to carry on a conversation because you can't get directly to the point because you have to go through all these avenues. And a lot of times, the minorities shun it off because they can't speak directly to the issue because of all the maneuvers with Robert's Rules of Order and, and all that. And, and going into executive session and, you know, all the things that you're-
Right.
You're bound from saying, you know, that, those things, those things have an effect on a person.
Sure. And we, we're gonna talk about that in a little bit too, when we talk about Robert's rules. And there's a whole section in a minute about executive session we're gonna talk about too. So I, I understand all of that. And, and it's, that's, this is really the, one of the hardest things to get to. But if you can get there, it, it makes a huge difference.
And I think social media has only made this worse, that you decide to take your displeasure with the majority to social media. And you may post something that's appropriate.
Yeah.
"I didn't agree. I voted against it. And now, you know, I'll choose to make this the best outcome possible."
Or move it forward.
Um, and then somebody, if I post something on social media, I, I feel like I'm ultimately responsible for those responses that are made that are inaccurate. And when someone questions the motivation of a board member or accuses them of taking money under the table or acting unethically, I believe if I've posted something that, that can, that allowed, that spurred that, and I don't say, "No."
Yeah.
That's not accurate.
Right.
Then I've endorsed their comments by my lack of action.
Yes, yeah.
So I think this gets even harder.
It does, in social media.
When we decide to take to social media with-
I, I think, I, I will say this. I am so thankful that when I was on school board, there was not social media.
That's why I talk about children.
And honestly-
I'm glad I didn't have it when I was-
Honestly, if I, if, if I were on a school board and I had a Facebook page, number one, I would limit who sees it. I would only have my friends that I allowed to see my page, see my page. I would put nothing on it about school board business, nothing. It would be about grandbaby pictures and PC. Now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna post about the blue hose. But even in my role at PC and alumni relations, there are issues I would love to put out there and talk about it. But I can't because of my position at the school. Because I have alumni who might not agree with that and I can't afford them to be mad at the school because of something I said. And so I, I think, school board members and social media could be a whole nother workshop. So I don't wanna get deep into that. But I do think, and the other thing is, your Facebook page is your Facebook page. And so if you do put something there and people are, are putting comments that are either inaccurate or flat-out lies or hurtful to someone else, delete it. It's your page. You can delete that if you want to. I mean, a lot of people say, "Don't do that on social media because it needs to be whatever, organic." Heck with that. It's your page. I mean, I hide stuff all the time. And I'll hide stuff on, I mean, at one point I had, I was able to monitor the PC main Facebook page and, and Scotsman Club page. And we would hide things that were personal against somebody or that were completely false. And I would get rid of them. But I would contact that person and say, "I know this is a public page. You made this comment, but I just want you to know that what you said was not quite accurate. This is da-da-da-da." So I, I would just suggest y'all think about that and have, you know, that's another workshop. But I would just be very careful because the other piece to it is this, and we're gonna talk about this in a minute. If you get into an issue, particularly if it's related to personnel or something like that, and you get too down deep in the weeds, and that issue comes up among the board for a vote, you gotta recuse yourself because you know too much about that issue. And that really comes in with personnel stuff. So be careful. And, and I wouldn't allow pe, public to make derogatory comments about fellow board members on my Facebook page. I just wouldn't do it. I would delete them, hide them, whatever you need to do about that.
And Lenny, just to be clear, there was just a case where it was a municipal. It wasn't a school board. But we received this from the School Board Association. If you're gonna engage in political discourse as a board member on your personal Facebook page, you may not be able to delete comments because-
Thank you. Yes, you're right.
Because you have now created a public forum.
Yeah.
So the safest thing is to maintain-
Yep.
A, a second page if you want to-
That's right.
To post about district. Again, we could do a whole workshop on social media, but I just wanted to clear that up.
Yep.
Because there, that's been in the last 48 hours that that-
Sure, yeah. The other thing, while you're on that, same thing with any emails. If you're emailing back and forth with somebody in your district or even with a fellow board member, unless your school attorney has copied on that, that is not privileged information, privileged conversation. It is public. It can be, it can be subpoenaed. And, and even though you think you can delete an email, it's out there somewhere. So just know that in your communicate, particularly around contractual issues, personnel, et cetera, when you're going back and forth with each other by email or even text or with the superintendent, it is not privileged. And it can be pulled up later and you could, you know, just be, be aware of what you put in writing.
Lenny, before we leave this whole, and I know they're only gonna talk about social media.
Yeah.
Beth said something that's really true. We're, we're very recently slightly removed from the election.
Yeah.
I think the sooner we move away from election mode to service mode.
Yeah.
The better off we are. And that's, that's hard sometimes.
It is. It, it is.
It's very emboldened feeling sometime. I know when, when I've been elected or re-elected, I feel just full of energy.
Oh, sure.
But I, but I will also say, and I grew up in an era of party lines.
Yeah, yes.
Most of y'all don't know even what that is. But people could, people could pick up and listen right in.
Yeah.
That's really what we have with social media a little bit. But beyond, back to basics, when you write something.
Yeah.
In print media.
Yeah.
We've, we've had that.
Yep.
I, my, my goal would be that that be as accurate as possible. And, and that's something I would like to ask all of us. We've recently had that. I understand Ken's issues with, he mentioned being in a minority position. I hope that will always be your feeling. But I've, I've been on this board 18 years. I've been in a minority position several times. It's not a terrible position to be in. But I would, I would caution, oh, it's not just social media. It's print media, accuracy. And, and that stirs people. If it's not accurate, then there's, there's issues to correct. So it, it, there's a lot of issues.
Yeah.
I'm just glad we're having this today.
Yep. Uh, I was going somewhere else with the email thing, but anyway. So this is not something that you have to sign, but this is just some, again, something comes from School Board Association and talks about supporting the majority vote. And again, it gets back, this code of ethics and that, that's kinda in there. So here's, here's kinda maybe potentially, Robert, where you're coming from. So the only spokesperson for your board is the chair. If you get a phone call from the media or whatever and it's about a, a decision that's been made, you technically should refer that to the, either superintendent or your board chair. Okay? Never speak for the board. Again, when you're outside of this board, a board meeting, you have no authority and you have no thing. This can get you in trouble and get the district in trouble quicker than anything else. It is not your responsibility to investigate school problems. And all of y'all have already said, made statements about, you've gotten phone calls, but you've called the superintendent to let them know. That's what you do. We'll talk about chain of command in a minute. But when, all right, so our board, we had a, a board member who loved to go visit schools and for the wrong reasons. And so as a board, we decided this is the way, and, and this again is, is the way you should visit schools if you're gonna visit a school. Number one, you let superintendent know you're gonna go over there. You call the principal. You let them know you're coming and why you're coming. It could be, because you really need to be in the schools. You need to see, I mean, it's great to see the programs and stuff that, that's going on. You go to, you go to the office immediately. You get your visitor's tag. You let the, you let the principal know you're there. Okay? And where you're going and what you're doing. And usually it should be about something specific, like you're going to see a program or you're going to the, to see the welding program and what all they're doing there. You're going to whatever. Don't ever show up at the school uninvited or not with advance notice because there's no good purpose to that. And do know that when you walk in, everybody that you pass, you are a board member Jan Hammond. You are not Bill's grandmother or you're not just, you know, whatever. To their eyes, you are a board member. So just keep that in mind. The board is committee of the whole. You have no authority, no more authority than any other member of the public. Stay away from micromanaging. We've talked about that. Think big picture. Think about why, not how. That's, that's superintendent's role. And concentrate on policy. You live and die by policy. If you've got good, strong policies, it will lay the groundwork for what, how you're supposed to do and what you're supposed to do. I'm, I'm a firm believer in strong policies. And I know that this district has, has strong policies. Think about what's your legacy after your off-school board, you know, service. What do you want your legacy to be? Okay? So, and honestly, if you think long-term that way, like what do you want to leave behind for this district when you're done with your board service? What does that look like? And, and it should drive how you behave between now and then. Okay. This goes both ways. And there's another slide that says superintendent shouldn't drop bomb either. Again, this kinda gets back to y'all maybe discussing how often you meet. But the, the, you should never bring up an issue at a board meeting that hasn't been communicated prior to that, that you want to discuss. Ideally, when the agenda is formatted or formulated, that if a school board, if a board member has something that they want to be on the agenda, you've called the board chair and said, "Can we put this on the agenda?" What you don't wanna get into a habit of is, once the agenda is presented to the board at the meeting, you don't wanna amend that agenda all the time to put other stuff. And it takes a two-thirds vote of your board in order to add or, add an item to the agenda. So don't surprises. Surprises do nobody any good. That's another reason why if you get a board packet, it's got a lot of information and maybe you've got questions, go ahead and either shoot the superintendent email or call or something and say, "Okay, I don't really understand this. Do you have information about this?" That way, at the board meeting, they can either provide that to you beforehand because they might. And again, if you've asked for it, they're gonna send it to everybody. Because if you've got that question, other people might have that question. And the staff who are gonna be there to either present something or whatever, you're not sandbagging them. They know that you don't understand something or you need more information. And they may be able to bring it then. Because if you, if you ask questions that they don't have the information for, then you've just delayed that conversation to the next meeting. And so don't ever drop a bomb. There's no good to be had by surprises at a board meeting. So now, I'm gonna go a little bit. Again, call beforehand so we, so you can get the right information. Superintendent shouldn't do that either. Okay? Now, from time to time, there will be things that happen. Now, again, maybe not so much for y'all because you vote, you meet every other week. But when people meet once a month, sometimes there's stuff that happens in between there that might be personnel-related or something like that, that, or even you get your agenda on a Monday and you're meeting the next Monday, there could be stuff that comes up between there. Superintendent should never wait till that board meeting to say, "Hey, this just came up. I don't care if it happens on Sunday." You let, you let the board know that this came up and we're going to have to deal with it tomorrow night. If it's three hours before a meeting and there's something that come, let them know. Or at least try to get the word out. Don't ever do it at the meeting. Because again, that doesn't, neither of those things help develop trust or mutual respect. Okay? And just, there's no good reason for surprises.
Lenny, before you leave that.
Yep.
I'm sorry. We've had a, a really good record of not adjusting our meeting agenda because of FOIA laws and requirements.
Right.
And we hadn't had an emergency.
Right.
And that's really what you're looking for.
Yes.
But, but I do wanna let, especially new board members, Mr. Love has asked a- But I do want to let, especially new board members, Mr. Love has asked a question last week, requested that we have an architect in the meeting asked last Monday night, and great timing, because the board officers met either the next day or that afternoon.
Right.
And we discussed that, but I immediately called the architect. I said, what's your availability, what's going on? And I'm not getting a long detail, but he basically said, well, here's the plan. I'm coming, on February 1st, I'm planning to be 15% of our whole program
Yeah.
As part, you talked to him earlier about, we're planning, we want to come to your first meeting in February.
Yeah.
So took that to board officers, and that's the appropriate time to do it.
Right.
There's also a public meeting coming up
Yeah.
That's coming Thursday night
Yes.
And there'll be a time for board members to have questions and so forth. So I'd encourage everybody, if there's something on your mind, let me know as quick as you can, and then we'll, but we may decide not to have it, but there'll probably be a reason tonight.
Right.
You know, we're not gonna knee-jerk to every issue that comes up in every school, because we have a pretty ambitious agenda
Yeah, sure.
Every two weeks, believe it or not.
Sure, yes.
You hadn't said it in the last two minutes, we meet a lot.
Yeah. So the other piece of that is, again, if a surprise comes up, you don't have time to, like, process that, and what does that mean? And what does it mean for the whole, everybody? And if individual school board members request something like that, then the whole board, if you're in a meeting, the board should vote on that. Does the board want that? If the whole board doesn't want it, is it necessary? So that's, you know, that's the other thing. You know, again, we talked about superintendent, no surprises. You've got to have the materials you need with information in order to make good decisions. Yes.
This goes to everything we kind of were talking about.
Yep.
And I know communication's the key, but I think sometimes I feel frustrated with maybe something that I'd like to get on the agenda. And I call Robert, he's always successful about that. But it may or may not get on there, it might be a reason, you know, Robert may have tried, or he talked to the board offices. But, and this is just, and this is one of those things hard to do.
Yes.
It may just be a feeling that permeates with everything that I, with everything I'm dealing with, because, you know, I have many times this year, been, we've been a 6-1 vote on a lot of things. So it may be all conjured up in my thoughts, because I don't vote with the board majority so many times, that they're not gonna probably put it on the agenda since I'm requesting it. And I know that's just a personal thing, that's not really, and I'm not accusing they do that.
Right.
I'm trying to talk to what you're talking about, that it's so hard about this
Sure.
To let go of history with people that, you know, don't support you.
Right.
So now you have to work together.
Right.
So you can, it may even be more like a, it may be more in my mind, you know, I'm being honest, but I do, but I have asked for some stuff, and I feel like I don't really have a voice
Right.
At the officer's table.
Yeah.
And so, no matter who the officers are, I've been to enough board trainings over 12 years.
Yes.
Whether they support my view or not, they support all of us. I mean, the three officers need to speak for all of us.
Right.
And so I think I have to, and it's good to have this, I mean, I appreciate this setting
Sure.
Because I can say that.
Right.
And I think that's the hardest thing, is to feel like there is that trust.
Right.
And whatever I may think is a good idea, if four don't, I'm probably gonna just decide, you know
Yeah.
I won't get anywhere with it.
Right.
And that's not right of me.
Right.
I mean, I'll criticize myself, that I need to at least throw it out there, and give them an opportunity to say, no, Jan, we don't, we don't think, we ought to talk about that.
Yeah, I think when individual board members ask for something on the agenda, I think a couple of things. One, it could be something that you're wanting more information about, or to express your opinion, that a conversation with the chair and superintendent might satisfy what you need, rather than bringing it up at a board meeting.
Well, you don't need so many board meetings, right? I knew, Robert was gonna say that.
The other, the other, the other thing is, you know, what is the item? Does it fit within what the district's trying to accomplish? Is it a one-off? Is it a, you know, what is it? And so
Well, mine's usually more information on something, because I feel
You want more information.
The bomb, I feel like that happens to me a lot.
What's that?
You know, whereas I don't have all the information I
Okay, good. So the thing is, you can ask for more information without that being an agenda item at a board meeting. So if there's something that you feel like you have, like, right here, needs to give out adequate materials well in advance for, you know, whatever. If you feel like you need more information, just ask for it. And again, if one board member asks for it, everybody gets it. So by doing that, that could solve the issue of actually putting something on the agenda just to get more information. Because if you've asked for it and you get it, everybody gets it, and they're, you know, so, but again, you gotta be care, not you personally, board members, had to be careful about what they're asking for, because what you don't want to do is to create a lot of work for your superintendent's staff, to put stuff together that they may have been able to explain to you without doing all that. You know, I don't know. It depends what it is.
I may have confused, I mean, your answer was clear, but I kind of put those together.
Yeah.
I do understand that something doesn't need to be on the agenda that's not relative and important.
Right, gotcha.
But then my other was simply, sometimes with, you know, your slide there, I so often feel, maybe not totally a bombshell, but I don't feel like that one meeting in something really major with some things that I may, maybe I'm not as smart as everybody, I'll think of something else, you know, 24 hours later
Right.
After we had it all popped on us.
Yeah.
And I'm thinking, oh, why didn't I think of that? You know?
Yeah.
And if I had it more ahead
Right.
Like one time discussed it, I know Dr. Milton would come up with all my answers.
Sure.
That's not, I'm not trying to say they don't
Right.
That something's not, it's being held from me.
Right.
It's more about time for me.
Right.
It's more about letting me feel, you know, totally educated on whatever it is.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I get, I get where you're coming from.
That is, because it adds sometimes, I think, especially when we make comments in public, Jan, you said the board officers speak for the board, and that's just not
I didn't mean speak.
That's not, well, I'm, I don't want to, I'm not trying to assign meaning to what you said, I'm just saying, you said the board officers speak for the board, and that's not accurate. The only person that speaks for the board is the chair. I mean, I have it
Based on actions of the board.
Based on the action of the board.
Yeah.
I think I should, I understand correctly, I would do that. But I mean, you would represent us in anything I would like you to take to a board office, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Even if the board officers think this isn't something we need to do, but if I would call you as secretary or Robert, and I usually call Robert, or Beth, I would assume that if I, I could say, would you represent me at the meeting that I'd like y'all to ask about this? And then you might, the board officers may say, well, we can, we don't need to go over that. But you represent, are you not saying that officers, three officers represent the board in your different three roles?
So if I get this right, because different boards do this different ways. So what I'm hearing is that the officers sit down with the superintendent to develop the agenda for the meeting, right? So, and board members can ask for certain things to be on the agenda if they choose to, but
They may not, they don't
They may not, but I think if they don't, then they need to explain to you why they didn't at that particular meeting. Maybe it's, maybe it's a full agenda, and that's something that's not necessarily timely, but could potentially be on something that, now.
Or you know it's coming up the next meeting.
Correct. Yeah, and this stream of things, so, and this isn't the way to do it, but I mean, if you, at the time of the board meeting, want to make a motion to add something to the agenda, the board can vote whether or not they want to let you do that. And then the majority, they could say, no, I mean, or yes, or whatever, so
That's good.
I mean, that's, it's not, you don't want to do that all the time, but, you know
But it's an option.
It's an option. You do have that option.
Who is responsible for getting the information that a board member requests? Is it the superintendent, or the board chair?
Okay, so, we talked a little bit a while ago about requesting information. So you can request it from the superintendent, but what's, the best way to do it is, again, again, and I'm not talking about you, one of our board members, just ask for stupid stuff. I mean, not stupid stuff, but just stuff, just to keep people from doing things, okay?
I heard you, you said stupid.
So what's the purpose?
You said stupid stuff.
Yeah. I don't mean, I don't mean stupid stuff, but like, just menial little things that really didn't have anything to do with.
I understand that, but I mean, I'm talking about key items that you need to make a decision.
Okay.
Or that you should be informed about
Okay.
Because of ongoing, say, a lawsuit that you had nothing to do with, that you weren't on the board
Right.
And you wanted to know what the progress is, or are we still pursuing that?
Mm-hmm.
And you don't get answers, what, where do you go for that?
Well, the first thing I'm gonna do is call the board chair, and, I mean, like, if you want an update like that, if he's able to update you, he will, and it may not, that may be all you need.
And then what happens if you don't get that?
You can bring it up with the full board, I suppose, but what you want to try to do is not make it a
Where do you bring it up with the full board if it's not on the agenda?
At a board meeting, to amend the agenda, to add that as an item, if you want. However, if you're talking about lawsuits, contractual stuff, it'd be executive session.
Then you're talking about dropping a bomb.
You are, which, but again, you're gonna try to communicate with everybody before that. The other thing is, we, again, we would have a board member contact our board chair if they wanted specific information, and if it was legitimate to what was happening, then he may ask that. But there was, there was stuff, and it was not legitimate.
I agree. I mean, I'm talking about things that you need
Sure.
Be able to function as, I mean, I feel like if there's anything in here that I need to know
Right.
That I should be able to see it, because I was elected by the people.
Right.
All right, and if I'm not being given that, what do you do?
Do you want to say something?
Yeah, I just want to say this, obviously, you hadn't asked me for that information, but here's, here's part of this learning curve.
Yeah.
Sometime in the near term, has been, as has been the case, we'll have like a quarterly update on pending legal matters. Now, you've had three meetings, one of them was last Monday night, we just haven't got there yet. Now, if you feel like you needed it before then, you certainly hadn't asked me, so I don't know who you've asked. But I think that's the key. There are certain things that we do get, and it always, you do need to know what's pending, what's happened, because you don't know, when you might be in a grocery store, and the litigant on the other side of the issue might be talking to you.
Talking to you.
So, yeah, but you have to ask. You gotta ask me, and I think if you ask me, and we get an answer, the whole board gets the answer.
Yeah.
So I don't know, who have you asked to this date about that? Anybody?
Well, I don't want to, I don't want to point anything out, I was asking the question, who do you, who do you go to?
You go
Is it the superintendent that's responsible to get me the information, or the board chair?
It's better if you go through the board chair to the superintendent.
Okay.
And what that does is, that eliminates some, a board member from asking for stuff all the time. And if it gets out of hand, then the board begins to act whether or not they need the information, because what you ask for, everybody's gonna get. I think, I think it goes back to when you get new board members, for either the board chair, or the officers, or whatever, to do kind of a workshop, to bring them up to speed. I mean, that's the other thing. And again, it's the time thing, and just learning the cycle of how things come, and
Well, I mean, I agree, I miss brand new, but I'm just asking
Ideally, you would contact the board chair, and say, I would, this is the information I would like to have, and then he can ask the superintendent to do that, if it's legitimate, and the whole board gets it. But if there's a board member who's just doing that all the time, and there's really not a, I mean, it doesn't really lead to something, then, and I'm not talking about you, I'm just saying, this is happening at other boards.
I understand, I mean, we don't have anybody on this board that would do that.
No, no, no.
And I have, I believe that.
Yeah, so I'm, but I'm just saying, at some other boards, that's an issue. I mean, there are some people who run for board, and that's all they want to do, is make the superintendent's life heck.
No.
And y'all don't, I'm not saying, I'm not saying it's y'all.
Everybody on this board, you know, supports the superintendent's agenda.
I know that, yes.
I mean, they really do.
Sure.
And they want to see the superintendent successful.
Sure.
You know, because their, her success is
The district's success.
Is ours.
That's right.
So I understand that, and we all do.
Yeah.
I think you mentioned earlier the importance of strong policy, and that's why
Yeah.
Oftentimes, we do have a policy for how to do that, but we have to familiarize ourselves.
That's right.
And it says specifically that, that if it's determined that that's extraordinary, you know, beyond the
Yes.
Then that would become, that would come before the full board.
That's right.
If the full board decides, no, we believe that should be made available
Yeah.
Then the superintendent would make that available.
Yeah.
But there are several places along the way, you don't have to go to a board meeting, and, you know, that's kind of the last resort.
Right, right, that's right.
Hopefully, you're getting the information, because
Yeah.
But the policy also clearly says, what's shared with one is
Shared with all.
Shared with all.
That's good, and
There's not siloed
That's right.
Information.
And again, you live and die by policy. So you've already got a policy that covers all that, so it's just, it's just a matter of sharing that.
Okay.
I want to move just a little bit, because we're, we've already talked about that. This gets into a little bit about, well, it goes beyond constituents, but, believe it or not, sometimes there'll be people within a district who will try to manipulate board members, and tell them things that they want to know, because they have angst against somebody. It could be a principal, it could be a superintendent, but they try to manipulate you to carry the ball for them. And don't get into that with, again, personnel stuff, y'all gotta, you gotta be really careful about getting into that. Don't raise every issue here about during a school board meeting, that's not necessarily the place to do that. And again, focus on data, and the information you're getting to make decisions, not on opinions of people who don't have the same information that you do, when you make, when you make decisions. The best thing you can learn is how to refer somebody up the chain of command. You get a parent calls complaining about a teacher, you refer them to the teacher, okay? You don't try to solve it, you don't call the teacher, you don't, you don't, you refer them back to the teacher. If they call back and say, well, I've tried to, that worked, now she wouldn't meet with me, then say, we'll reach out to the principal. But you don't do the work for them. You refer them back. Because here's what happens. People call you and they just want somebody to listen to them. They have no intention of acting. They just want somebody to listen to them. Listen to them. Don't take their side. Don't say, you know, whatever. You've got to be neutral because you don't know what the situation is. Just listen to them and refer them back through the chain of command, depending on what, where they are having an issue. If they've already, if it's a principal issue, refer the principal. If it's at district office level, refer them to superintendent. Superintendent's last on that chain of command, by the way. Well, y'all are ultimately, but you want to start at the lowest link of the chain to, to refer somebody back. If you do that, people might call and they're going to talk to you, but they know you're going to do it and you're not going to solve their problem. I said earlier, if you get a phone call and you start saying, oh, I'll take care of that, your phone will ring off the hook. And you do not want that to happen.
That's the model of Jan.
Yeah. This is the other thing is why you need to not get into too much discussion about people who have issues, particularly if it relates to personnel. Because if you get in it and you talk to people and you get all these different sides of what's happening, when it comes up before the board, you're, you have to recuse yourself. And, and by you're not being at the table voting, you're not representing your constituency. So remember that. That goes with, you know, personnel issues, contractual issues, anything like that. You've got, you just, student discipline issues, stay out of it because you could, and, and lawsuit, I mean, you could, you could end up in a lawsuit. Don't have your own hidden agenda. Your agenda should be what, what's the goals of the school district and, and that's what you're acting on. Again, keep that global perspective, not the minutia. Again, don't participate in illegal executive sessions. This is, this is a big thing. So there are only certain things that you can discuss in executive session, and they have to be on the agenda. They have to be named on the agenda before you go into executive session. Personnel issue, contractual matters, superintendent's evaluation. I think that's it.
Legal. Did you say legal?
Legal advice, yes. So those are the only things that you could go. If you have a, another issue that's not in any of those lines, it has to be in public. Once you go into executive session, it is so important that what is discussed in executive session stays in executive session. And I'll tell you why. If you can't trust your fellow board members to not go out and talk about what happened in executive session, then you can't say what needs to be said in order to make good decisions. Okay? So fortunately, the board I was on for a long time, it, it was nobody, I mean, it was, we, we followed the rule of law. We had good executive sessions, good discussion, made good decisions. Had a board election, got a new person. We were discussing a contractual matter. About three days later, I'm in the grocery store and I hear it. And it was discussion that had happened in executive. I'm like, what the heck? And so, um, anyway, we finally solved that. But if you can't be honest in executive session, then you're not going to be able to make good decisions. And it is confidential for a reason. And a lot of that, a lot of what happens in executive session is personnel sometimes related. Again, lawsuit liability, your liability personally and as a board, if you go out and you talk about that is, I mean, you, they could sue the pants off of you. If, you know, so just be aware of, don't use executive session to talk about other stuff that shouldn't be discussed in executive session. Just don't do it.
What happens if you're in there and you, I know there's a, umpteen ways that you could have a lawyer go to an executive session and that could be, you know, under the guise of legal advice, but it might not be an issue that should be discussed there. What, what should an individual board member do?
And.
If you, if you're asked to go to an executive session that should not have, that should not be an executive session?
Well, and there's something here that talks about, that might be the next slide. So if you think that the executive session is not under the FOI statutes, then you, you state that and say, I don't believe this is correct. This is, shouldn't be in executive session. It could be. I mean, then it needs to be explained to you why it is. Okay? And if you still don't believe it, then you need, you just need to state that opinion.
State that and stay in there or leave?
State it and, and see what the explanation is. And if you still believe that it shouldn't be in executive session. But that, that doesn't hap-, hopefully, that does not happen very often. I mean, most boards these days are extremely tight on executive sessions and doing the right thing and not putting something in there that shouldn't be. So, and, and a lot of times you're going to have an attorney in executive session because you're talking about personal issues and contracts and, and all that kind of stuff. So.
Wouldn't, wouldn't, prior to getting to whatever point, I'm sorry I missed that question. I'm really sorry I missed it. But wouldn't it be a nice thing to pick up the phone, call the board chair and say, I'm concerned about this issue? That you got down, it'd be exactly, because I'm.
Oh, sure. Always beforehand, if you think there's something that shouldn't be, yeah. I mean, if you see it on the agenda.
You know, this is not something.
It's hyper.
Yeah, this is just a hypothetical. What would you do if, okay, so I'd call the board chair.
Yes. If it's on the agenda.
Just because an attorney's in there doesn't mean that it's thing.
That's correct. No, you're exactly, you're exactly right. That's, that's exactly right.
Okay. And so, you know, that's used a lot of times, you know, and I've read about it in, you know, school boards and, and decisions that have been handed down and things that there, you know, I, I think there was one in Newberry County.
Okay.
Just recently.
Well, and, and there are boards that sometimes don't do the right thing, but, but you want to make sure that your board does the right thing.
I was just asking you, what does the individual board member do when, when you believe that that shouldn't be?
Right.
I can tell you what that looks like because it happened not long after I was elected. We went into executive session and I, I had just been to board training and realized that I didn't know near what I thought. And, and I asked because it was a legal update. And the board was gracious enough to say, you're concerned about it. We understand. We're going to, we're going to, we'll restate this for the next board meeting. And so, you know, it, it was, it was handled. Another time I, early on, I asked, well, is this really an executive session item? And once it was explained to me, yes, and here's why, bom, bom, bom.
Right.
I'm like, okay, I can live with this. So I, it, I think it, but it's on us.
That's correct.
As board members to raise those, those questions and to say, hey, are we staying focused? And there are certain things that we can do in executive session. I didn't mean we'll do all of those.
That's right.
I mean, we may choose not to.
That's correct.
When it's a contract, when it's a student, when it's, you know, there are some of those things that are personnel.
You have to. Yeah.
That we have to. But just to give an example of how it's worked on the short time I've been on this board, it's, uh, it's been respected by the other board members. And one time the, it was delayed and the other time it was explained to me and I was like, okay, I got it.
Yeah.
And then I, I'll tell you a policy that we have, and it doesn't happen often. We usually just run over. We can't get it all done in the hour we got. Sometimes we'll have an hour and a half.
Yeah.
But if we finish, just like the other night, we had one item for executive session. We state that before we go into executive session.
That's right.
I always read it. I ask for motion to address those issues for executive session.
That's correct.
If we finish, I declare us out of executive session, open the door.
That's right.
We do what we want to do. Go down to hall, go to restroom, go visit, but we're not in executive session.
That's right.
So there's no, there's no attempt on this board.
Yeah.
Well, to be clear, we don't do what. Well, I was just going to say, we don't do what we want to do. We're not, we're not, we're not discussing board matters. We may be getting an email update or.
But you're out of executive session. Yeah.
You know, finishing dinner or we're not, we're not working as a board once, once we come out.
And I think I saw your agenda, y'all do executive session first.
Yes.
Is that purposeful?
So that we can take action during.
While people are there. Okay. Yeah. Okay.
No, so that anything that came up in executive session.
Yes.
Our executive session item also shows up on our action item.
That's right.
We always, always have personnel actions.
Yes.
And occasionally, like Monday, last Monday, that's all we had.
Yeah.
Occasionally, we'll have another item or two, but so that we can take an action later, that's why we do it.
Gotcha. Okay.
So, so to clear that up, that if, if, if a board member, you know, hypothetically had a problem with going into executive session, when the motion is called for, then is any discussion, that's the place that you would say that I have a problem with that?
No, I, I would think that if you got your board peg on Thursday night and you saw an item over the next day or two reading it, so, well, I don't know why that's an executive session.
Yeah.
Just call me. And then I would say, if you don't realize it till then, bring it to my attention or bring it to the tension. Because we're voting to go in executive session to do items A, B, and C only. So bring it to the tension. But I, I'd say that's back to where, where if you can let me know ahead of time, we'll figure it out.
But let's say that you told me your reasoning and I still didn't believe in it. And I wanted to go on record that, you know, I don't believe that should be there. Then you would say it, when the motion happened, you would say at that point, any individual discussion would, would occur at that point? You have to have a motion to go into executive.
Right. You've got a motion, a second, then discussion.
Yeah. Okay. Then, and then that, that's the point when you would say, okay, I don't, you know.
You know, you could say, I called our chair. I still don't agree. This is an issue for me.
Right.
And then I think the board member would have options. You could either not go and protest, don't go in executive session, or say, well, I'm going to put, for the record, I want to make this statement that it's not, I don't consider it. I, I will tell you that for me never came up until a few years ago. In the first meeting for a new board member, and it just caught me so off guard, the person said, Mr. Kent, Mr. Chair, why are we going in executive session? And we just stated it. And I can't remember that night, but we had about two items. And so we stated that. Everybody went to executive session. But the law is very clear. You can't discuss certain items.
That's right.
And with this board, I will tell you, has been by the money on that.
More, in, in, back in the day, it wasn't like that.
Yeah.
In today's times, that, it's pretty straight. I mean, it's, yeah. I would also say that if you, if you're not sure about that and you call the chair and you, you still don't think that's right, I think to state that in a public meeting, again, undermines the trust. Because then what you've done is you've called attention that perhaps the board is not doing right in executive session. If he's explained it to you and, and it's determined that it is, that it, it could be executive session. For you to do that could cause a little oomph. When you get in executive session and they start that topic and you realize maybe it's not, then you state that and the board could adjourn executive session if, once you're there. So just think about how your act, public actions on that.
That's what I was asking. That's why I was asking you that because I didn't want to embarrass the board. But on the other hand, I don't want to do something that, that I don't think is legal. So, I mean, you know.
Right. And I think this board would not put you in that position.
And I will tell you this, one of the first calls I would make, because it's free.
Yeah.
So I'd call School Board Association. They have a lady named Tiffany Richardson.
Yeah, they have legal counsel.
She is their legal group. And I've called her.
Yes.
Twice.
Yes.
Probably since October. But anyway, that's free. I'd say, here's the issue. What do you think?
They keep it, I mean, if they don't think it is, they'll tell you in a heartbeat, duh, that is not an executive session.
She said, I think you're okay. And I came back to you or any other board member.
Yeah.
And you said, I still got an issue with that. I'd probably.
Yeah.
Well, I'd also tell our board officers. I'd let Dr. Milton know. And then we'd probably call another legal person to get a second opinion.
Yeah.
That probably wouldn't be free.
Hopefully, you, you're not going to run into that.
No, but I'm just trying to.
Oh, sure. Of course. How to do. Yeah.
Just trying to map it out so I don't embarrass anybody, but it's still the right thing.
That's right. Exactly. Exactly.
I have a question on that, but.
And then we got to kind of move because I don't want y'all to get out of here for too long.
Lenny, we got all day. You, you with us. We got all day.
Yeah, but everybody going to get, y'all going to get hangry in a moment.
Do you think we meet too often as a board?
I knew you.
Do what now? Sorry?
Do you think we meet too often as a board? What's your opinion?
Jan, what you going to say?
I wanted to ask Robert and, and Dr. Milton this. Do you not think?
Double question here. You lay it on us. You come on. Come on.
Now, tell me if I'm remembering wrong, because this is for people that have been on the board, how Beth would be up opinion. I don't remember ever having so many, almost every executive session having a lawyer there. And I know it's expensive. And are we just in that much of, that's what I want to hear.
Yeah, I can answer that.
I know that's not your question.
I can answer that question.
But I thought of it when he said it.
We just, we just came out of a 10-year building project bond referendum. We had contract after contract. You, but you do remember all that.
I'm asking you why did you have, because you didn't used to ever have a lawyer.
Oh, I know.
Except for one thing.
I agree. I agree. But that's what drove that. Contracts.
Okay. You've answered.
Yeah.
Absolutely what drove it. And so.
Sometimes that, sometimes that'll ebb and flow. And a lot of times when you're dealing with that kind of stuff, that is going to be a norm.
We have it just when there was a specific thing.
Yeah. Yeah.
But then it, to me.
That slide's not helping.
They're there every time.
Huh?
That slide's not helping us.
And I, I'm going to say.
No, that's for like.
Is that, is that your slide to go on to the next slide?
This is talking about.
I see that. I see that.
We're going to move to.
I forgot that that was even there. No, what I meant was.
Lenny, thanks.
No. This is related to executive session and after it's over, don't talk. So. And this, this is again, just a statement. It'll be in the PowerPoint that you get. And this is just a commitment to do executive session right and to keep everything extremely confidential. And again, I mean, honestly, you don't even discuss it with your spouse or your partner. You don't discuss anything. And I will tell you, that was my hardest thing, was not having somebody else to, like, go home and you want to decompress? Not about executive session. You can talk about everything else that happened, but not that. Don't consider staff the enemy. They are not your enemy. I can promise you. And, you know, I love that one.
Oh, take that out.
And the stat, the, the teachers, you know, you don't consider them part of the public, but they are. And this, you hear this all the time. Okay? And. And I'll tell you why you hear that. It's because so many people have no idea what administrative staff have to do. And what administrative staff have to do is implement all of the national and state laws that are absurd of paperwork. And it's all-consuming. And the reason that you have them is to keep you from being sued. And so that things go the right way. You need to make your staff feel part of the team of the district. You need to laud them. You need to recognize them. You need to thank them. I mean, and, and that's a good district when you can do that. Yes.
Lenny, I wanted to go back to that, that slide.
This one?
Yes. And another problem I, I think I just learned several years ago in going through the budget process is that the way the state requires school districts to identify, for instance, the coordinator of elementary education. I don't know if that's the exact one, but a lot of the educators who are maybe coordinating at the school level.
Yes.
You know, maybe coordinating elementary or special ed or whatever.
Right.
They require the school district to call those administrators as if they're not in the classroom, if they're not helping the teacher. And so that's really hurtful to school districts across the state.
Sure.
Because it's not really true. I mean, they are.
They are in the class. They are in the.
They're, they're meeting with the teachers and they're not making executive decisions at all. They're, they're following.
Yeah.
The board policy. They're following what the director of instruction.
Yes.
Has given to them. And, and Dr. Milton, you might, I'm sure you can explain that further. But it was so frustrating to me when I read. I said, well.
Yeah.
You know, the, the number might be a high percentage. It might say that we have, I don't know what it was.
Yeah.
And it's really not that at all.
Well, and that was purposefully done. So it would look skewed. But, in my opinion. But what administrators are doing, they have to do so teachers can teach.
Exactly.
Because if they weren't doing that, then teachers would be doing some of that. And so, and again, we could, might do away with some of those administrators if some of the state and federal stuff would go away. And what, just a quick aside, if the premise of charter schools is to do away with so much regulation, and that's a good thing, then why not do it with the public schools we have? Duh. I mean, honestly. So.
It is a no-brainer. But hey.
Always follow your policies. If you follow your policies, you're, it will be less likely that you're going to get in trouble. Where it says overturn board policies, there will be very few times that something may come up that you have to set, uh, set a policy aside so that you can act at that time. One may be if you've got a, you know, if you've got three readings for a policy, but it's something coming up and you've got to act then, that you can set that aside and do it. You do not want to do that very often. But in my 16 years of board service, we did it one time. You just don't want to make that a habit. Because if you're doing that, then check your policies and you may have to redo your policies. So, um, let's see. Again, you live and die by policy. Now, this is just personal. Board service takes a lot of time. Okay? But don't let, don't forget what's important. Family, family time. And it's tough to balance it. And, you know, after 16 years while my kids are growing up and not so much local board, but state and national, I miss a lot, you know? And so it's, you know, you got to think about that. But as my fourth grader, when I was first on the board, I was, you know, doing, getting ready to go to a meeting on a Monday night at 7:30. And I'm getting my stuff. And he said, you're going to another meeting? Oh, my gosh. I was like, well, I'm trying to make the world better for you, you know? So. So balance is a, is a, is a key thing. So, um, you know, if, if we all knew the secret of life, we wouldn't, you know, lone people wouldn't be standing up there on the, on the rock by themselves. Nobody knows all the secrets. And if, if board meeting, the biggest thing, number one, is focus on what your commonalities are. Y'all have so much in common about why you ran for the board and why you do what you do. Agree on the problem and then work together to, to solve it. And a lot of times, if you can agree on what the issue is, it will, it will solve itself. Now, I have other words, but children, number one, keep the vision in mind and be aware of your liability. I mean, that's, that's really key because some of your actions can really get you in trouble in that. So, um, I'm going to wait for him to come back. Somebody did mention.
That is not you. That is not.
Yeah. I wish I had thought. And I, I will say that I borrowed this from a site that lets you borrow this. And I wish I had changed that picture out, but I didn't think about it at the time. We're going to fly through this because I'm not going to get into the nitty-gritty of, of Robert's rules. I just kind of want to talk about what makes a good school board meeting go well and just the basics really, really quickly. Of course, the chair presides over the meeting and is responsible for maintaining order. It says council, but it's, uh, should be the board. He decides questions of order, announces all business, recognizes member. This is a key. So if a board member wants to speak, they should be recognized by the chair before speaking. And when a board member speaks, they should address their comments to the chair, not to somebody else. Because that keeps you focused on the, the item on, on the agenda and not related to a person. And that, honestly, if y'all can move to that, that's really, it, it really helps the board discussion be more targeted to what you, what you're doing. Refrain from discussion and vote unless a tie occurs on a motion. Remain fair and impartial. That's the chair's responsibility. Now, a lot of times for school boards, the board chair can make comments and discuss and vote. There are some entities where the board, the chair doesn't vote unless they have to. Most school board members, board chairs do participate in the conversation. And I will say, when I was chair, I was typically the last, I mean, I would, I would let the discussion go. I would not be the one leading it or whatever. I would, I would let the board members have their say. And then if I had something to say, I would do it. But, but you, you kind of want to moderate that, that discussion.
Isn't there a rule on that, though, that, that the chair can vote where it's legislative? And, and but he, but he cannot vote when it's for information purposes?
Not with school boards.
Okay.
Not with school boards.
And again, our policies would spell that out.
Our policies would spell that out. Yeah. But I don't know of any school district where the chair is not a participant. So. The agenda is your order of business, ultimately determined by the chair. Two-thirds vote to alter that. We've talked about all this already. Sometimes it's good when you have an agenda is to put times by each item so that it keeps things moving. Don't have to, but sometimes that's a good thing to do.
And, and Lenny, before we leave that, just so everybody hear me thinking it and saying, because I've mentioned board officers. We've had some long meetings lately. That's why we've added some meetings back to try to help that.
Yeah.
But we, we used to put some timeframes and it really worked because people would get to the. But we used to put some timeframes, and it really worked, because people would get to the point.
Yeah.
Say what they needed. So we may go back to that, just so that we're not 10:30 leaving a meeting.
Well, it keeps, it keeps things on point. The other thing I would say is, a lot of times when, when there's a lot of discussion around an issue at a board meeting, it's probably related to people not trying to get the information beforehand, and so it just leads to that. So I always encourage you, if there's things that you can learn about, get more information on, et cetera, prior to a board meeting, to try to do that, so that it does cut down that timeframe. Quorum is pretty easy. I think most of y'all are already here. If a meeting can begin without a quorum, but for school boards, typically, it's not an issue. And that's for that particular thing. A motion is a question to the body, and we won't do this all up. You can only take up one motion at a time. These motions, like to approve the minutes, to approve committee reports, et cetera, usually require a second. No other business can happen before the primary motion has been disposed of, one way or the other. Other motions can be made that affect the content, debate, or direction of a primary motion. For example, so somebody makes a motion, somebody seconds the motion before discussion. You have to have a second before discussion. And then the chair would ask for discussion on the motion or the question. And then following that, somebody would make a motion related to the question, okay? So you have your discussion, and then this happens. If somebody gets off topic, the chair can call, say, "This is not related to this particular motion." Set that aside. We'll take that up later, potentially. So you keep them on topic. You can call people, the chair calls people out of order. Let me get there. There can be amendments to motions, okay? There can be one amendment, and there can be an amendment to that amendment. But if, let's don't deal with two. Let's deal with one amendment. So if somebody makes a motion to amend the motion, then the file, you have to have a second on that amendment, and then you have discussion only about the amendment, not about the original question, just the amendment. Sometimes that can be complicated. And a lot of times, an amendment is minor, but you have to deal with it before you can move back to the original question. We won't even get into an amend the amendment. That happens so very, very rarely. So we're gonna go around. So you've had a motion, original motion, a motion to amend, and then you deal with that amendment. You either vote for it or you don't. The, if an amendment is accepted, if it passes, then the chair states the original motion with that amendment. So, for example, I moved that we paint the chairs green. So if somebody makes an amendment to paint the chairs blue, so then it goes, and then people approve that. Then the chair restates the motion, say, "We moved, the motion on the table is to move, to paint the chairs blue." And then you, I'm getting through that. And then you vote on that, that motion amended, okay? Now, you can vote on the question. You can vote the table. You moved the table, which you don't wanna do that very often. That's not a, not a good thing to do. You can postpone it. So if something comes up, y'all don't feel you have enough information, you can, you can, you can move to take that to the next meeting to get more information.
So Lenny, the postpone means you want it to be brought up again with some more information, but table is like.
Table, it could die. I mean, you know, in the legislature, if they table the motion, it's done.
It's gone, yeah.
So you don't wanna, you don't wanna table anything, really.
But that's not, in our deliberation, that's not true. I mean, that is true at the legislature.
But if you table it, it can come back up.
It can be removed from the table.
Yeah.
But the difference in table and postpone, postpone to a date definite.
Specific.
So we would say we postpone until this date. The table lays there until somebody brings it from the table.
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, this is, this is what Robert's Rules called for, and honestly, I didn't know that, that you could only speak to the motion once. But question, a question doesn't count as speaking. So, you know, you monitor all that. Not every motion's subject discussed. So somebody could call the question, no discussion after that. Table the motion, no discussion. Motion to recess or adjourn, no discussion after that. Y'all aren't gonna divide the question. Suspend the rules, no discussion. It's an up or down vote on those things, okay? And those aren't gonna happen very often either. Motions with no debate, that happens a lot of times. If you've got all the information you need, and there's a motion and a second, and there's no discussion, that's not a bad thing. On some things, that's not a bad, that's not a bad thing. You will, if you do get into discussion, and it's just going on and on and on, and a board member feels like you've had enough information, you can call for the question. And what that means is end of discussion. You vote on it. Takes two-thirds of the vote to do that. And if that happens, then you call the question. And we don't do that. You don't wanna suspend the rules very often, but you can. Takes three-quarters of your board to do that. You can amend that, but we're not gonna talk about that either. Like I said, we're doing all of it. Everybody should vote. The only time you shouldn't vote is if there is a very, very specific reason. If there's a conflict of interest, but you state that, like you would state, abstain from the, this vote due to conflict of interest. Because if you're not voting, you're not representing your people. You're not representing your voice at the table. And again, you're gonna do that before the vote. And a lot of times, you're gonna, you're gonna know that before, particularly if it's like a personnel issue, and you're gonna have to recuse, you know, not abstain.
Well, if you're gonna abstain.
Yes.
The reason that's so important to know before is.
Yes.
It's rather inappropriate to participate in the discussion.
Exactly.
And then.
Exactly.
And then state, I'm going to abstain or recuse myself.
From this.
Based on.
Yes. Yes. Because you should not be in that discussion, no. This is, you can vote against your own motion, but you can't speak against it, which is interesting. Because why would you make the motion to do it if you, you know? Okay, let's see, two-thirds of the time. This can be suspended. We talked about suspension. If there's a tie vote, well, if y'all got a seven-member board, it's gonna usually not be a tie unless somebody's not here. And if somebody's absent, you got a three-three vote, the motion fails, okay? Hopefully, that won't happen much either. This, again, goes to the chair voting, but the chair's on the school board's vote. So we won't worry about that. And then any questions? Now, what I have found, a lot of times, is a chair will say, okay, there's been a motion and a second. All those in favor. State the question. Always state the question when you say, "The motion is to da-da-da-da-da. We have a second discussion," you know, after the discussion, and then ask for the vote. So that people are clear on what they're voting for, particularly if there's been a lot of discussion. Because a lot, sometimes they'll just forget what they're, you know, talking about or voting on, and.
Lenny, lately, we've been doing a lot of policy. We always do policy.
Yeah, yeah.
And we state that, and I've got, where I try not to state that totally fully, so the person that makes the motion can state it.
That's right, yeah. But if there's.
Probably don't need to repeat unless it's controversial.
Well, or if you've had a lot of discussion after a motion and a second.
Where it's unclear.
Or yes, or somebody has quite, yeah.
Help us with this, because I think any new board member goes through this, and I've had it as board chair many times. Somebody wants to make a motion, and the motion needs to be pretty concise, just like you said. I move that we paint the chairs in the boardroom accordingly.
Yes, yeah.
But I have people that wanna have a, that do a motion, and they'll say, "I wanna do the chairs because this, the," and that's the discussion part.
That's right.
So talk to us a minute. It just needs to be simple, concise. That's the only thing I, unwilling to explain it.
Yeah.
And then you put the discussion.
That's right, yeah. Because what you wanna do is get the issue on the table for discussion, and you don't wanna give all your reasons then. You wanna wait until, you know, you'll say, "I'd like for us to add an addition on to Ermo High School." That's your motion. You don't have to tell them why. And if it gets a second, then it's up for discussion. Sometimes you can throw a motion out there, and you don't get a second. And so there is no discussion. It does not move anywhere. I have been, not on school board, issues like that, but church council? Y'all, this is a piece of.
That's what I know so much about.
You know, I didn't want to put this in perspective. Board service is a piece of cake compared to church council.
Thirty years as a minister, I have seen it all.
So it doesn't happen too often on a board, but it can. So, you know, just because somebody brings forth a motion to do something, and it's like out there somewhere, doesn't mean you have to second it and take it up. I mean, if nobody else on that board is in line with that at all, and there's not a second. Now, some people will say, need to second it just for the sake of voting it down and putting it to bed. And so, again, that shouldn't happen very often, but it could. Particularly on a board like this, that shouldn't happen very often.
So a person seconding something can then vote against it?
The second, yes. Yeah, because here's the thing.
The one that makes the motion can vote against it.
Right.
They just can't speak against it.
But here's the thing, too, and a lot of times, and I have done this in larger meetings, I have seconded a motion that I don't agree with just to get it on, just to get it on the floor for discussion.
Okay.
And, and you can vote. Again, after discussion, the person who made the motion may determine, well, maybe that's not what we need to do. And so that's why they can vote against it at the end.
Yeah, I guess they were persuaded not to, that their position was not so important.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it happens. And that's, that's why you have discussion, and so all that can get out. I do think, you know, to me, mainly for board meetings to run smoothly is, board members come prepared. You've gotten questions answered. You've got your materials. You've read your materials. There are people who show up and open their packet at the table.
Oh, yeah.
I know y'all don't do that, but there are people who have done that, you know? And then they're the ones who have all the questions and wanna, you know, that's just not the way to do it. So you show up prepared. You don't surprise the rest of the board with an item. The superintendent doesn't drop a bomb. You speak to each other with respect and address the chair when you're in discussions instead of each other. That's a biggie. If y'all, if you can do that, that really helps. Yes.
On the, we often will have executive staff present.
Yes.
Policy, and our questions are asked of that.
Yes, that's different.
When we're discussing.
Right.
The merits of a motion.
Correct.
As a board. I mean, I think we delineate that. There are times when we're asking questions.
If there's somebody making a presentation, you certainly can ask questions of them to get to facts and stuff. But if you're, if you're acting on.
Debating the motion.
Yeah, exactly. Then you want to address your comments to there. And what you don't wanna do is, you know, the other thing is chair, if you do have a staff member who's making a presentation, and you've got a board member who is like attacking that person, you wanna stop that. You don't want that to get out of hand. And hopefully, that wouldn't happen here, but that's happened. So, you know, the chair's very, you've got to keep order. If people are speaking out of order, call them down. I mean, to say that you're out of order, you know, and you just have to do that. And, yes.
You're so true. A couple of things before we leave motions, especially for newer members. There are times, and you've noticed this, and I've asked several of you to make motions. We may come knowing we have a complicated motion that needs to be made.
Right.
We had one of those on a student matter last time, but.
Yeah.
Those will be printed out basically so that our board secretary can have proper minutes.
Yep.
If we have complicated, but most of them just need to be.
Simple, yeah.
Pretty succinct.
We, we, when I was on the board, if we had a complicated, we would type it out just so it wouldn't get lost, because somebody would really be trying to do the right thing to put it out there, and it would just get all discombobulated. And so there's nothing wrong with having it written how it, that motion should be put forward.
I would say as board chair, the hardest thing for me is to get anybody's words back in their mouth. I can't do it. I can't do it from the public participation part, and I can't do it. But I can, I can slow it down or.
Yes. Or call people out of order if they're out of order.
And I'm hearing what we were all saying today. I'm gonna do the best I can do with that. But sometimes things are out there. They're said. It's like your mother taught you. Don't say it if you.
That's right.
I mean, you're gonna hear it.
Kinda like Thumper's mother, you know? You don't have anything nice to say. Don't say anything at all.
Yeah, absolutely.
Public participation time sometimes can be difficult, because you want to give that person, you've given them a right to speak, but it has to be within parameters. They can't attack school personnel. They can't attack board members. I mean, I had somebody call me Pharaoh one time. And my password on my computer for a long time was Moses. So, and I was chair at the time. So when you're chair and you're being attacked, it's even more difficult to call somebody down, because then it, then it's like you don't wanna be, you know, criticized. So sometimes your vice chair or something might wanna say, you know, you're out of order, you know, that kind of thing. Hopefully, that doesn't happen. And I'm sure that you have people sign in before they speak, what topic they're gonna speak on. They have a timeframe. That helps, too, to keep that in check. So. Y'all been here long enough? And before you get hangry.
I got a burning question.
Yes.
How often should we meet as a board? Do you think we need to? That's kinda been hanging on me all day.
Well, y'all need to decide that, so. But truly, part of that is, are you getting information far enough ahead of time? Why, why, I mean, if you have that much business that you need to meet that often, that's fine. There's nothing wrong with that.
And we have so many accolades, seriously, like, you know, winning teams, music groups.
Yeah, but you can bring them before, I mean, you can have more than one group.
I'm just saying that we have a lot of that, which is great. And that's the most important thing.
That's a piece I think I picked up, the timing and how to get the information out in time for people. They have more than three or four days over a weekend when they might be busy at a wedding or something.
When we go electronic, that'll be easier.
That's.
It'll help a little bit, yeah.
You'll have it two days earlier.
That's right.
Not if, not if.
Would it be for sure earlier, because it takes all that printing time?
Yeah, well, stuff could be posted as it, instead of having to wait for a whole packet, you might not have 100% of the packet.
I got you.
But if these two items were already ready, they could be distributed.
Because it really is, it really is important, because, like I said, especially teaching, I go before 8 o'clock, okay? So I can't, I'm not gonna call and bother people here at 7:00.
That's right.
And then, even though some come in at 7:00, but I wouldn't do that.
Yeah.
And then I'm home after 5:00.
Yeah.
So I've had no time.
And again, I'm not telling y'all, y'all need to, I'm just saying, you can look at that exam and.
It would help me when Monday night comes, and I haven't, you know, have some things that I, you know, I feel like I could've asked, and they would've given me the answer.
Because if it's not timely, even if it's a longer agenda, if you meet less often. Sorry. Again, it's up to y'all, but.
It's being recorded.
It's not, that is an external observation without having looked at your agendas or why you meet that or anything else. I'm just.
We are in the midst of a good bit of policy.
Sure.
Revision right now, at least for this next year.
Yeah, sure.
Lenny, it feels like we're winding.
Yes, we are. I'm done, so.
We just wanted, before, before we do that, we, Robert, I'd ask that all our folks came in that have helped us this morning. One of the challenges as we put this meeting together was it's a holiday weekend. And I just wanted us as a board, before we leave, I'm not saying we're done, done, but I just wanted us to express our thanks to this.
Don't we have questions?
No, I'm just, we're not done. I just wanted, while they're in here. I just wanted to thank our staff that, and so faithful to help us pull stuff like this off on a holiday weekend, Saturday morning. And before we drifted away, I wanted to express our gratitude.
And I think Michael just did thank you all for spending your time. So thank you so much for securing us, opening it up, making the coffee, all those good things. We do appreciate it.
Making this look good on TV, cameraman.
That's right.
Oh, my gosh, I forget Ashlyn. He's standing behind that camera.
He kinda hid in there.
And Ashlyn, we're gonna start the whole thing over at 1:00 after our lunch break.
And I'm stuffed.
And I will say, I'll take questions, but I would, I mean, it's, y'all need to go, so.
Just one comment I wanted to make. I wanted to start, it's sort of, this goes back to new traditions. And I wanted to, I wanted to urge the board to, I know Nikki and I have talked about this, to interview or have together the new board members and kinda get their aspirations of what they wanted to see when they ran for the board, because that's important. I mean, there are things that, that we wanna see happen that maybe, you know, some of that could happen just because we saw it as, as a group collective. I mean, when you have new people on a board, it's a different group than it was with the people that were on here before. So I just, I just wanted to make sure that we welcome any new members from here on out with, with talking about their aspirations, and I wanted to throw that out to the group.
I think that's a good point. And I think when, early on, I mentioned about, if you wanna call it onboarding, new board members, and having those meetings where you, whether it's the chair with them or the executive, or whatever, where you try to bring them up. the executive, whatever, where you try to bring them up to speed and hear their thoughts and, and share what the district's goals are, so that you get on a, you kind of get in sync quicker than just coming in board meeting every other week. Did you have something, Beth, you want to?
No, no, I was just, I was agreeing with that, and I, and I have to say that sometimes we all have good intentions that just don't happen to come about.
Sure.
And I know Robert and Michael and I had talked about saying, okay, well, maybe, you know, well, two people can sit down with Ken, and two people can sit down, you know, the two of us, so it couldn't be four, it couldn't be all three, with Nikki, and find out those things. Well, then Christmas happened, and I traveled, and
Yeah, it's
and that's, you know, and so it's, I think it's, we, I think it's a great idea, and it's not too late. I just said to Nikki, it's not too late.
I do think with, with November elections, it is
Yeah, it's Christmas.
a really difficult time of year
Thanksgiving.
to make things like that happen, but in January, you start over, and it's, it's Board Appreciation Month, January, and that might be a good time to do it. The, I'm gonna do a quick commercial for SESBA, huge resource. Go to as many conferences you can go to, workshops you can go to, utilize their website, they have lots of good stuff on there. Go to conferences, because what I found when I first started doing that, not only did I learn a lot, but when you talk to school board members from other parts of state, you realize what a good board you are. I mean, honestly, and how well your district runs, because there are some that are not like this. And it makes you feel better, it, it reinforces that y'all are doing the right things, and yes.
Lenny, while we've got the whole board here, I want to shout out, it's a point Ken made, but to Nikki, and I was so excited when I heard that was one of your visions, how much more we need to look at mental health as a part of safety for our schools.
Sure.
Because it's really, really, nobody likes to talk about it, you know, if, if you're a family with, that has the problem. And yet, it is definitely as important as an SRO officer in a school. And Nikki said that. Now, I thought about it, but as Beth said, you know, a lot of times I have ideas and just hadn't acted on it. And I'm just excited that when Nikki said that, I said, oh, Nikki will bring new, you know, that new vision, and I'd be happy to back you up, and I think probably this board would, too.
The, the other piece of some of that, some of those issues like that are so broad, much broader
Yeah.
than a local district.
Oh, yeah.
And what I, one of the things I learned on local board was, by getting involved with the State Association, because you've got to impact what happens in Columbia, because if you don't, you, you're not gonna make the changes like that here.
No, you got it.
And so, and then, and then nationally, too. But anyway, do you want these to?
Yeah, but their graduation certificates, yeah, I'm gonna hold them for you.
Okay.
I, you know what, I, I appreciate everybody's time today. And before I say anything, Dr. Milton, you've been so quiet like a mouse.
I know, she never is quiet.
You're not a quiet person. I want you to have a moment.
That's right, they're laughing.
And then we'll wrap this thing up, and totally, but you go ahead.
And I'm gonna stay seated, Mr. Gant, because Mr. Gant
No, you don't ever stay seated now.
or walking while I talk, but that's just, I'm a roamer, apparently. First, Lenny, I'd like to just applaud, we, too often in this country, we take for granted the freedoms that we have. So, I celebrate the fact that we have a board of seven that's elected, and that we come together as an elected board, and our folks make decisions in the best interest of our students. So, I celebrate the freedoms of this country first, because I think too often we take things for granted, and if you look around the world, that's something we should celebrate and be more grateful for, in my opinion. I also think about the phases of change. There's storming, there's norming, there's performing. Because elections are held in November, and we immediately seat our board, we, the timing of calendars from Thanksgiving to the winter break to now, there have been lots of things. So, we're in the phase of storming, which by research is normal. But this is trying to normalize us. So, going from storming to norming into performing. So, I look forward to the work that's ahead, and of course, I started July 1st in this current capacity, so I'm gonna play the new, new card until June 30th, until I go into year two, assuming there will be a year two, going into year two. I'm just grateful to know that I've got the support of this board, and Mr. Lovett said it so eloquently earlier, and I completely feel that. And that means so much, because we talk about recruiting and retaining our staff, communities and applicants notice. Those who are going to administration, they're savvy. They know which places have political implications. Teachers are savvy. In fact, last year, we had a teacher that came to us from a neighboring district, obviously who had experience, and she said that when she went through her departure, where she was honored by the school where she was leaving, that that principal in another district said, you realize you're going to a very political district. Well, then she questioned her decision. And so, she called to ask us, have I done something wrong? And of course, what are we going to say? But that's the kind of things that are being used now about recruitment, to try to keep people where they are so that they're not enticed to come to District 5, whether you're first year out of college, or you're a veteran person looking to make a change and to come to school District 5. So, those kinds of things, whether you realize it or not, the operations of the board does affect our retention, our recruitment, and the efforts that we're trying to do. So, I just celebrate the fact that we're here on a Saturday, the commitment that we're showing, this is gonna make a strong commitment and a statement to our community that this board is learning together to go through the storming into the norming, so that we can indeed get to the performing stage. So, thank you all for your Saturday. I want to echo the staff, each of them. Ms. Doc could not let this group get together without her being here, so we didn't have to open up to other volunteers. And Ross is in his first month on the job, so for him to be here, and Ashlyn's always here with such commitment, so I just applaud all three of you, and thank you so much for your time on a holiday weekend. It means so much. Thank you, Mr. Gant.
Thank you, Dr. Milton. And I'm only gonna say, again, I, I have those three people down again, but we do thank you for being here. I'd remind all of you that this is all recorded, and I'm gonna be talking to Mr. Ed White. I want him to view as much of this as he can. I hate that he didn't make it. He hates that he didn't make it. I, I wanted to say to y'all, something came up a little while ago that Lenny said that I think we all have to keep in mind, and that, and we all know Bob Shields, that just passed away a week or two ago. One thing that really touched me about that, and I didn't know him personally, but I knew that he was on the air, had done that for years, did a great job with it, and he, in his, some of the write-ups, had said that he realized when his kids were, I think, 12 and nine, that he wasn't, he was never home at dinner. He was doing this, that, and the other. So, the slide that you had about family, keep that in focus, we all do. It is, it's most important. That's why most of us are here. Something about our families brought us here to say, hey, we're gonna serve on this district we love. So, do keep that in mind, family first. But as far as you all, I have the utmost respect for you. You're all duly elected, you serve, you sit behind, I've always said this, when you walk around, sit behind the table, and you listen to the issue, raise your hand all the way, it's, it's life-changing sometimes. It's different. It's very different. So, I appreciate you for what you represent there. I asked Lenny about this conference. We had a really ambitious agenda early on, which is gonna take us all to about 3 or 4 o'clock. She said, we don't need to do that. And part of those goals and objectives, we need to do, it'll mirror what our superintendent and our, and our whole staff is trying to do. So, we want to come back maybe after annual conference, do another Saturday like this, if you'll do it, and spend your time. I think it'd be well worthwhile. But Lenny, that's all I'm gonna say. Thank you for coming today. Thank you so much, because you did a great job personally. Y'all helped me follow through.
Mr. Gant.
Yes, ma'am.
We did not get to number four to allow, if there's any general questions.
Oh, my gosh. Well, Lenny, that's your fault.
So, I mean, we got 15. No, I, I don't think it's Lenny's fault. I think it's, we just were rushing through. I mean, I don't know if there's any, but I just, I see it.
Well, it was kind of like when I started, I said, this question's got, would be throughout. So, it was kind of covered, yes.
Okay, well, should you, should we say, are there any other questions?
Yeah, are there any other questions?
You might have one, Nikki.
For a few minutes, I think that'd be
And we said to one
It's not, it's not one, Nikki, you have one.
Nikki has.
I think he got answered.
Nikki's the root of this problem. You want to open another can?
Your knee, darling.
Nikki, you do know Mr. Gant's sarcastic humor, don't you?
Oh, I know.
Make sure you picked up on that by now.
Yeah. Well, I do have, I have a question. You know, you talked just a minute ago, Robert, about the board getting together and, and setting goals consistent. I, I still want to go back to what Ken and Nikki said, and what, you know, our, our good intentions that didn't come about quite yet. I would like to have, find out, and I don't know the best process, best procedure, but find out exactly kind of what's, what's on their mind, what was it that you hope to achieve by getting on the board? And then, what was the other thing? I'm cheating on your sheet.
Cheating on your sheet.
Yeah.
Cheat, cheat, cheat.
Well, yeah, I just wanted
Oh, yeah.
Since we're coming in to a board that's mostly established, what are the goals and objectives and your vision? What has your vision been? We need to be on board with that, so.
And then she also made a good point, helps us sit near new people, is that sometimes, you know, they don't know everything, could not even begin to know anything, everything. I don't know everything. But there are certain, I guess, things that we just kind of keep in, in our head that we know. But there needs to be a way to be able to communicate. And do you mind me sharing, just very briefly, just your example of, that Ed mentioned to her during the last meeting, said, we have a policy for 750 in elementary school. And she said, I didn't know that. And, and I said, well, I started to say, well, why would you? I mean, you know, it's just that that information's not there. So, I don't know how we can do that, other than inviting the new board members to, to, you know, number one, please ask questions, but number two, you know, have a, have a little patience that, that it will come. I was telling Nikki, I, very fortunately, my first year, sat beside Chris Robinson, who had been on the board, had been the chair, knew a whole lot, knew, had, at one time, was the chair, the president of the South Carolina School Boards Association. So, through that year, I mean, I, I sat there going, I don't know what in the world, I almost didn't even know how to make motions. And so, I could lean over to Chris, or talk to him afterwards, and ask for, you know, I don't quite understand this. And it was so helpful, and it was amazing, not just through Chris, but just watching and observing how much I learned, you know, by year two. And I'm still learning, but I know it can be frustrating, so I share the frustration. And, and I do know that, you know, we definitely want to provide as much information, answer your questions, and, you know, feel free, feel free to ask. And certainly, Dr. Milton, anything dealing with the school district is there to, to answer questions.
It sounds like we want to have some coffee soon, okay?
Yeah.
I really, truly
Yeah, I think so.
Robert, when, when Larry and I got on four years ago, and I will tell you, it was very helpful, y'all planned it, and you had two people to meet with us about all the chafing, construction stuff, because it was very complicated, and, and a board member met with us, and they asked us to come an hour before the first board meeting we attended.
I wonder about that.
And it really updated me, because I'd have gone in there and, because in those two years, I didn't know any of that that had happened.
Right.
And, and that hour before, and I didn't mind coming, and Larry didn't mind coming, and we learned a whole lot. It was like a, a, a crash course.
That's a great idea. That's a really good idea.
And I think, we said this a little while ago, you asking about why all the lawyers, honestly, we're kind of at the point now, I'm thinking, I'm ex-hailing. I was so excited when that bomb reverend passed, still am. That's the most work I think I've ever dealt with, and a lot of board members, but you realize, it's, it was detailed, it was constant, and, and we hadn't, I mean, we're certainly not at the pause part, but what you pointed out, we were right in the throes of some real difficulties.
Oh, yeah, and y'all knew that Larry and I needed updating, because all kind of stuff was coming to us. And we certainly didn't know what y'all knew
Right.
about, you know, some of the legal stuff.
Legal issues, exactly.
And I was shocked, you know, of course Larry kept saying it wasn't our fault, because we weren't on the board.
And Beth, I'm gonna give Beth, Beth and Michael all the credit. We had talked about exactly what Beth said.
It's a good idea.
Two members meeting with Nikki, two members meeting with Ken, and we, we're observing the four-member rule. Four of us meet, we're, we're having a meeting. So, but we had well-intended, it just didn't happen. But it's not too late. We're early in this process, so if y'all open to
Well, I, I would like to see two members meet with Nikki and Ken together, because
Ken can't do that.
That's right, you can't do that right.
That'd be forward.
We have one member meet
We can put the smartest
Why can't you do that at a board meeting? That, that wouldn't be executive session stuff.
You could do it in public. It would have to be done in public.
Yeah, well, I don't, I don't have a problem with that, other than I'm not an elephant.
And Mr. Lovett, we're gonna, we will make sure there's a legal update, because it changes.
You have one.
It's usually a quarterly or every six months that happens, so there are things that are gonna happen, and we can make them happen sooner or later. Honestly, it's just been the Christmas break, and we're back on, here we are, January the 19th, and it's flying.
Y'all going to conferences?
Yes.
Is everybody going?
Yeah.
We have to go, because we're, the new members have to go, don't they?
Yeah. Training is required. You could do it another way, but I wouldn't advise you to do it. You can do it another way, but I wouldn't advise you to do it.
You can do it by video.
Oh, I'm going, I'm going.
You learn a lot, you meet a lot of people.
Yeah, I've been, I've been, I've been to a, a couple of things.
You can hear this again, but, you know.
Yeah.
Somebody else will do it.
No, I, I think what I hear around this table, people want to cooperate, people want the best for this school district and especially for the students in this district. If we're all focused on that, how can we get off track? We're not always gonna agree. And, uh, but I would, I would say to you all, I'm gonna do my best to cooperate, be understanding around the table. Seven members on this board and we're supporting students in this district and their families. I've said this for years, this area is very education-minded. There's a beautiful lake out there that some of you live on, you love it. There's great churches, great shopping, there's right here in the heart of the state. But the key factor, I think, is this school district. That's why people come here.
Well, it's, it's really the only government that this area has to itself.
Right.
Everything else is, is either in Lexington or, or in Columbia.
Right.
But no, nothing else. There's no other unifying government there than, than this school district in this area.
Right.
And that's the truth.
Well, that's a great point, great point. And I think you said a key word, it is a unifying entity. And that, that's what we all, I have as our goal to keep it as a unifying.
I mean, I think it's pretty amazing that two counties could get together and do anything together. You know what I'm saying?
It hasn't been easy.
I mean, that's, that's hard to do.
Yeah.
And, you know, we did it.
It hasn't been easy.
You know, I think part of that being two counties has helped us stay together, really. I mean, it's, I know before we built our house over 30 years ago, there was a lot of talk about shaving that part that was in Richland County, put it back over in Richland County with, and, and I can tell you, folks' ears were up. But we're unique in that split county. There's a couple of places like that.
The, the history of this area goes back before the Civil War. This was settled by Germans and they were all together in, in their belief that a lot of the people here didn't support the Confederate effort and, and, but basically this was not, they left it alone. They left the area alone. And so, that's why this area has, you know, has unified itself together with, and the school board is an example, or the school district is an example of that.
Yeah, I think it's the most unifying thing out here. I, I've said this for years, there's, there's thousands, well, there are parents and families of 17,000-plus students out there that I think are very pleased with what's going on. They're not gonna come tell us how pleased they are all the time because they're very busy. They're, they're going to soccer fields, doing homework. I hadn't done homework with a child in my home in a long time, other than my granddaughter sometime, and I can't even do it anymore. So, it is, uh, they're pleased, they're happy, and there's no reason they shouldn't be. And we need to be listening to what the issues are and trying to fix that as much as we can.
May I?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, just because of the question that Beth, Ms. Hodgson raised on behalf of Ms. Gardner, there's so many dots to connect that it's gonna obviously take time. I heard you say two years. And no one on this board, on my observations, is patient enough to wait two years, including myself. And because of that, we've got to make sure that we are connected, and I keep using the phrase with the staff, connect the dots. If you were to look at my priorities for this year that I cast to the staff, beginning back in June and then again in July, and then with the entire faculty and staff at Erma High School in August, you're gonna see the fifth priority is about the safety of social, emotional and physical health and safety. If you look at the budget, you're going to see that the previous board supported the budget to bring in more CDFs to relieve guidance counselors, to do more of that, and line items for mental health services. But I had the fortune through SCASA, the State Administrator Association, to go down and speak to a subcommittee, um, in the House. They were discussing teacher retention and trying to get some information. So, I was the speaker for SCASA and Representative Allison, Rita Allison, asked me, tell us what you would say if teachers say they need more taken off their plate. And one of the things that I said was, we've got money in our district to support mental health, but we can't find people to fill the contract services to bring in more mental health assistance. So, we need more help of working with DSS to make sure they're properly staffed. We need more work in mental health to make sure they're properly staffed. And I started outlining some of that. So, so far, the board has worked around some of those things that they've heard me cast through the budget, through my goals and through the priorities to make sure that we could try to unify. Well, fortunately, as a result of that, um, Friday, two weeks ago, if I'm not mistaken, Dr. Harris and I,